Back in the day.
Oh, I was like, Kelly, do you see? You didn't see where I'm being here. We got that hand for the eyes. Bring that guy. So here it is. Does it go now? I was trying to imagine the craze in their field best ball. The name is very famous. They're sure.
You know more, you don't.
Good.
Good. And my eyes dilated today, so I'm struggling a little bit to.
Well, yeah, I had cataracts. Surgery. See out of this.
It's all you can do. Yeah, I was referring. Will that go away?
When I get new glasses.
Oh, so you're getting glasses to adjust them.
He's changing her rhythm and take care of them.
Oh, that was worse. It goes on.
Heard videos.
Black nine now. All right, we're ready?
Yes.
G'do. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this September twenty first Board Supervisors meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We give the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every.
Thank you very much. Do we have any changes we need to make to the agenda? Alrighty, do we have an adoption of the agenda?
So.
Exactly.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker, all in favor, singing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Chair votes aye, motion passed five zero, Mr. Dahl.
Chairman of the boards have a few things to report, couple of repeats from previously and some reminders. So one, we got a new, uh, new employee starting at the sheriff's office as a deputy sheriff. Dustin Herndon started September twelfth. So we're happy to have him on board and filling up. I think the sheriff's department, I think he said at some point, I think he's about a hundred percent full right now with my positions or yep, so we don't want to jinx anything, so.
Gee, thanks.
Yeah. Um, the drive through Rabies Clinic will be Saturday, September twenty fourth. Again, this can be at Pleasant Grove Park from nine AM to twelve, uh, from nine AM to noon. It's a ten dollar cost. Again, Dr. Jim Starkey of Tucker Veterinary will be doing that. You know, asset individuals and their pets remain in their vehicles. Vaccines are good for one year. Um, and that three year vaccinations are available and we, and they just asked if you want to get your pet vaccinated, please pre-register in advance. You can go to the website fspc.org or you can pick up a hard copy application at the FSPC. Um, so this Friday, September twenty third at approximately ten AM. So Dominion Energy, their Bremel Power Station has been pretty much mothballed and dormant now. Uh, a non, non-used, uh, energy facility for, gosh, I want to say probably four to five years at this point.
At least.
Yeah, at least this, um, so this Saturday, they will be doing a controlled implosion demolition of their facility, um, down there at Bremel Bluff. So Friday, September third, twenty third, approximately at ten AM. There is a weather delay date for Saturday. There'll be closures in the area, so Bremel Road from about, uh, the Bremel Post Office to twelve sixty eight will be closed starting at nine fifteen AM. And the James River will also be closed, um, from the Bremel, uh, Bluff Boat Launch to about a half mile downstream reopening of those areas are anticipated around eleven AM. And, uh, I know Dominion has one, they've sent out some, some, uh, some social media stuff, they sent letters out to constituents and nearby property owners and they're doing a lot of their due diligence to make sure everyone is aware, so. And then just some upcoming board meetings, uh, Wednesday, October fifth, we have a five PM regular meeting here. Wednesday, October nineteenth, a seven PM regular meeting. And then Wednesday, November second, we have a five PM meeting and I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Any questions? I'm gonna add one thing. Anyone willing wishing to volunteer to help get tires off the river? We are gonna do a cleanup and they're looking for volunteers just to help load them from the canoes to the trucks.
Rivanna River.
We're gonna go from about miles south of or east of Palmyra down to Red Bank Lake, so.
And what, what?
Saturday. Then we're gonna start at nine o'clock.
This Saturday.
Saturday, but we're looking to get out about two thirty to three and they were looking for anyone who would be interested in helping. They said the last time they did a stretch a little further west, they got about eighty to ninety tires off. And they were just looking for folks to help us get them up the back.
And is there, is there, I mean, just so we can get it out, is there, is there any organization that's doing it or any?
Riven, uh.
Riven River Basin Commission?
Or Alliance, which ones it has. I can't remember.
Okay.
Well, well, they've, we've got people to go down the river to get the tires.
Okay.
They're looking for people that if anybody would be willing to volunteer to help get them off the river.
Okay.
When we're done, so if you're interested, contact me.
Alright, good. Uh, nothing else for me, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, Ravanna River Alliance, River Conservational Alliance.
Oh, yes.
And Ravanna Conservation Alliance, at least.
I bet you Kelly will know before.
I bet you Kelly will know before I'll know it.
Aaron's maybe in his stuff there. He says, yes, right.
Good, there you go, Conservation Alliance.
I'll say I, I could never remember the middle word. Um, alrighty. Any other comments from the board? Alright, hearing none, I will now open the first round of public comments. Anyone wish to address the board, please state your name, address at the microphone. Keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Step forward if you'd like to speak, yes.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Farrell and I live at one oh seven Riverside Drive. My family moved to the Riverside neighborhood of Lake Monticello from Hampton Roads this past May. I want to take a few minutes to thank you for, um, the resolution tonight to vote on the VDOT roadway safety assessment and present some thoughts on why this matter should take priority with time and assets. Last Tuesday afternoon, I was leaving my home during rush hour for the first time since moving out here as I'm often home with my children. I waited at River Ridge Drive on the non-gated side almost two minutes to make my left turn onto South Boston, a term which neighbors have earnestly likened to gambling and called truly an accident waiting to happen. I watched not one but two near accidents happen right in front of us. And in the aftermath of my shock, um, I've unmovably resolved to try to help this stretch of road become a much safer thoroughfare. I can't see that my children are ever getting driver's licenses until it is. Indeed, one of my neighbors has even had thoughts of moving out of the neighborhood before her child learns to drive stating that it's just too big of a risk. And yet another mother shared with me last week that her son does not even want to practice driving with his learner's permit on account of this very left-hand turn. This ought not to be. To say I've never experienced anything like this intersection and specifically the left-hand turn from the ungated side in all my life is no exaggeration. There's no margin for computational error or hesitation. Even if the brush has been cleared, a driver has to begin counting how many cars have to pass the beginning of the S curve to calculate a break while continuing to glance east and north to check for cars from those directions while remembering how many cars are in the part of the S curve that you cannot yet see until they pop within view about two seconds before crossing the intersection. If a car pulls up who is not turning, he then has the right of way according to Virginia law. But compounding this issue is the fact that drivers fail to use turn signals and even forget the rules about who has the right of way in the first place. Sometimes the right-hand turn lane headed west is used as a passing lane for people turning left um, in the through lane from South Boston to River Ridge Drive. If someone without a barcode doesn't remember to not turn in there, I've seen a work truck driver have second thoughts, continue in the through lane and then almost get rear-ended by the next driver coming westbound at fifty miles an hour. It's also frequent in five pedestrian traffic with youth crossing on foot and bikes. On behalf of my neighbors, I respectfully submit to you that this safety study is long overdue. The next day after this experience, I called and spoke with our administrator, Mr. Dahl, to discuss what could be done. He encouraged me to contact VDOT saying the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And so I decided it would be my duty and joy to reach out via social media to the community. In the past week or so of so doing, there's been an overwhelming response um, of exasperation at the problem and gratitude that this issue is once more being addressed. To all of us, it's an urgent matter of preserving life and well-being that is deserving of any and all resources of time and funding allotted to it. VDOT guidelines state that prior to the field review portion of a roadway safety assessment, stationary video for a minimum of fifteen to twenty minutes to observe and record varying traffic conditions should be collected. I pulled some of our neighbors through our Facebook group to ask when they felt the most dangerous time was. The overwhelming answer was weekdays between seven to nine AM and four to seven thirty PM. I ask that you please insist of VDOT during the data collection phase that footage be taken during these times. I would like to take just a few moments to share with you some of the comments from our community about this matter. Number one, I almost got hit by a speeding pickup last week. He hit his horn, not his brakes and was most definitely speeding. Number two, I'm on Riverside Drive. If you could hear folks hitting the Jake Brake around the curve at Buck Island, my neighbor across from us has folks hit her fence out there three to four times a year. Number three, if I'm riding my motorcycle, I always go to the slice gate no matter what time it is. Number four, there have been uncountable accidents and even deaths at this intersection. It's mind-boggling that nothing has been done to make it safer. Number five, nighttime is easier for me because I can see headlights. Anything between dawn and dusk is difficult, whether you're turning right or left, it's always a crap shoot. And number six, I was broadsided by a car coming out of the Riverside Gate. It never stopped, it came through the gate and kept right on going four years ago. I spoke with the lake's general manager, Mr. Schotter, yesterday morning and he affirmed that there have been discussions about trying to enhance the signs as well as to make something more apparent about the gates and GPS software. I told him convex mirrors would help greatly. The state no longer provides these and Mr. Dahl seemed to think they might be the responsibility of the lake since the use would be from private roads. Please include these ideas in your future conversations as well as painted crosswalks, reduce speed limits, flashing lights and a four-way stop or traffic signal. I ask you on behalf of the residents of Lake Monticello in Pluvana County to commit to making a total resolution of the infrastructure here of highest importance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Add a question to the board. If I remember right about that study, none of us will be participating in what's in, in deciding what's in the study, correct? It'll be an outside group deciding.
This is something different. This is, this is specifically a VDOT study. VDOT does specific safety and speed studies in county roads. This is separate from.
Coming at the, the study of last.
That, that's different from the TJ PDC kind of overall community. This is specific to a specific roadway.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, the information could, could, could gather, what's, what's gathered could feed into the overall study, but this would be something more specific to this, this stretch.
I normally don't say anything, but I will tell you this, last week I was pulling out on the school bus and taking a right about four o'clock and no, about three ten in the afternoon. And as I took my right turn, I looked back over my shoulder to my left and a car came around the curve. They had plenty of time to hit their brakes. Instead of hitting their brakes and slowing down behind me, they shot into the southbound or westbound lane and passed me on a blind curve, so.
So I'm just trying to stand, so if, if it's off of private roads, then what effect can the board supervisors have on what she just made?
So from the private road standpoint, so again, this would be a, a, a safety study looking at the stretch of road and, and you know, speaking with Scott Thornton with VDOT. And again, we've got the, an, an agenda item to kind of go over some of this, but speaking with him, you determine a stretch that you want to look at. So in, in the agenda item, I'm, I'm proposing, we look at from right before Broken Island Road where the big curve is, where you get lots of cars running straight off that corner right there to going down to probably where about Lake Monticello Road is.
Gotcha.
And so they'll look at that whole stretch, looking at from visibility, speed, you know, is there signage that they could do? But, but also going back to your question about private, you, you know, as I was talking to Mr. Scott Thornton with VDOT, what he said was, he's like, normally they wouldn't do something like this because it is private, but he's like, they, they've just done something similar with, uh, Lake of the Woods up in Orange County. Now, it would be, it would require some coordination with, with Lake Monticello. And I already spoke to Tom Schotter, the general manager there, just to kind of give them a heads up on this. And, you know, from his standpoint, obviously he can't speak on behalf of the board, but you know, he said that he couldn't imagine that the lake wouldn't be willing to cooperate with whatever comes out of the safety study.
And, and I'm gonna suggest again, don't stop right there. Come up the hill behind the lake to Crofton section. I pulled out of Crofton this afternoon. And I have no idea what the line of sight is to my right, but I'm peeking between a tree and a fence to my left to make sure nothing's coming. Nothing's coming that way, so I started coming out. Here comes a dump truck and I had to slam on the brakes, slam it in reverse. Thank God, nobody's behind me. Well, when, when, when the Crofton section is no joke either.
Yeah.
Crofton, Monish, Riverside, they're all bad.
They need it.
No, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Ken.
No, no, I was just gonna say, um, you know, that, uh, with this speaker's edification, um, the, uh, last board meeting, the board voted for us, uh, study through, uh, the TJ PDC for the purposes of potentially getting grant funding that would allow the use of those funds that are separate from VDOT funds that might address s- some of those intersections and we specifically mentioned those intersections. There isn't a, a time that VDOT doesn't show up that I bring up that intersection as well because I live right there. Uh, and, uh, and you know, I've had plenty of encounters myself. As has my wife and my daughter, so it is a really important thing, but we've been hamstrung because it is, uh, public-private com- kind of combination here. So it's great that you're putting the efforts out there to, to get people, uh, out, out and talking to the community about just how dangerous it is.
Alrighty, I apologize for taking up too much time, um, during public comment. Is there anyone else here that's wishing to speak at this time in public comment? I apologize, like I said, I don't usually say something. I felt moved at that one.
Good evening, board. Good to see Mr. Sheridan, Mr. Dahl, Ms. Booker and board members. My name is Bruce Bowlen. I'm not a resident of Pluvana County, but I'm the pastor of Columbia Baptist Church located one sixteen Ravanna Street in the great town of Columbia, Virginia. Good evening. Um, my five years I've been here as pastor of the church, it's been a amazing thing because I've learned so much, got to meet some new folks, some folks I've known before and new folks. Um, it's been a wonderful thing and it just amazed me about the history here in Pluvana County. And just the things that I have learned over the last year and a half. Uh, Ms. Tricia Johnson has been helping us with the Free Hill Cemetery with the cleanup. And then just the things that I've learned about the, where the church actually sits at. And then just in general throughout the county. It just amazes me that we have this great history, we have this great information here in Pluvana County. And so I, I come before you all as the pastor and of the church and I have heard what some of the congress have said about the area and they feel like, or how they feel about the area. And if I may read, um, I believe this is a mission statement that you all adopted in two thousand sixteen and I believe you all are working on another one, but it raises, it says, Pluvana County is committed to providing an excellent quality life for our citizens and businesses through the delivery of competitive public services and programs in an efficient and effective manner. In talking with the members of the church and then in some of the other surrounding areas of Columbia. Now, one of the things they were talking about was care for the children. They were talking about care for seniors and transportation. And it was curious about maybe trying to revive and bring things back in that area because it's hard for some folks to go up to, let's say, Zion's Cross Road to do some shopping. It's so hard for some folks to go up near the lake to go to the food line. And so these were some of the cares and concerns that they have expressed to me. And I feel like that I'm kind of behind the game, but not necessarily or not doing this earlier. That maybe I should have done this earlier and spoke up for the folks. And so though, no, they just want to reach out and they brag about Pluvana County and they love Pluvana County. But they also want, um, that part of the county not to be forgotten. And so we know that as businesses leave areas, the people leave areas and then areas tend to die. And so they just want to have this voice and just want you all to hear and just to get together, maybe possibly meeting with the representative of the area is fine. And then just talk about like some strategy of bringing businesses or maybe transportation back to that area. And I know that this is a tough time, this economy with the virus going on, things have kind of shut down, but just to have or come to the table and have a conversation and to hear from those folks, because you know, and what I did was I asked a couple of members of the church that are involved in the county, you know, some work in the schools, some work with Parks and Rec, some in the county who have children. And it's pretty much been the same concern, the transportation and things for children to do. And, you know, because we want our children not to be in trouble, we want our children to be successful. But it's kind of hard when things are against it and, you know, maybe not as easily accessed to them as other parts of the county per se. And so, you know, we just want to express that and just reach out to you all, the great folks here on the board and, you know, just thank you all for what you do. And just ask for maybe just a moment of your time, just to sit and talk and discuss on some possibilities that we could do, that we can help serve because, you know, to follow along with the mission statement. And then, you know, we, we love to hear that. And that's inclusive of everybody, not just, you know, kind of leaving out this particular area. So I just want to thank you all for your time again, you know, good to see you all, good to see some of you all again as well. And thank you for your help back a couple of months ago and so appreciate it. Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, board, chairman. My name's Corbin Flynn, three nineteen Shiloh Church Road. Um, I'm probably gonna be a little repetitive, but I'm gonna go back to your last meeting, September seventh. Uh, and you guys spoke at length regarding the minutes of the meeting. You talked about, uh, how the minutes are just a summary of a meeting, um, the, either Mr. Dahl or Mr. Payne, I might get them confused as far as some of their comments go, but they sort of left the onus on you supervisors. Ultimately, it's your choice, what you feel is adequate. Even though you don't prepare the minutes. And, uh, I know Ms. Solis and before her, someone else prepared them. But over the last couple few months, I know they've been critiqued. I know they've been put off and altered as a result of that. I don't know for a fact, it's my opinion that, uh, Mr. Dahl and Mr. Payne uh, have a significant amount of input in how those minutes are then delivered to you guys for you to then pass. Um, the last meeting, one of the comments that Mr. Payne made was the word funeral was irrelevant. And, uh, yet I went back another time, I said five years before. So you can't go back past ten years on your website, you can't pull up minutes in two thousand twelve. So I went all the way to two thousand thirteen, over two hundred meetings you guys have had. Ms. Booker was the only one that was here on the board back in two thousand thirteen. So four of you were around. How many times have you amended your minutes in over ten years? One time. It happens to be the June fifteenth meeting. Yet it's irrelevant? Or it's just a summary? There must be some purpose behind that. I feel like that purpose has been conveyed to you folks and then you folks went ahead and passed it. And then the minutes from, I think it was the August, uh, third meeting where I brought up that concern, you waited to let them be passed this past meeting on September seventh. And, uh, you, at one time, the word that they wanted to put in there for me was contextualize. And I get it, it's a summary of minutes. But it's, it's being driven, the narrative is being driven by what's in those minutes. Either they are important or they're not important. They can't be both. They can't be, well, it's not a big deal if it's adequate, if it's a summary and then turn around and amend something that you haven't done for ten years. Twenty-three meetings a year, is that what we have? Ten times twenty-three is two hundred and thirty meetings? Almost two hundred and thirty meetings and you've done it one time? I went, the reason why I know that, uh, you can't go back past two thousand twelve because I had a little bit of extra time this morning, I wanted to go all the way back before Ms. Booker came to see if it had been done since you've been here, ma'am. But I couldn't go because the website doesn't show it. And that's okay, I'm sure it's an archive somewhere. But, um, you know, what is done in these meetings matter. It is a big deal. What this board did in, and I'll call it, it's my opinion, and I think it's a valid opinion, in the invalid June fifteenth meeting, authority has been shown. You guys haven't shown the authority, it's Mr. Payne's opinion that you guys have done it okay and you've accepted that. But you don't have to accept just his opinion on it. You haven't shown any facts that that meeting was okay. So the June fifteenth meeting, when that project comes about, that's gonna affect not just me, it's gonna affect other property owners. I built that thing twenty years ago. Mr. Sheridan came in last meeting and he was running a few minutes late and he's like, could there be ten more minutes in a day? Because you work hard, you work hard for a reason, to take care of your family and to build something for your family. This board, in a matter of two hours' time on June fifteenth, you took that twenty years away from me that I worked hard for and the people around it. Several of you have mentioned that, you knew that it was a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in public comment? Okay, is there anyone online that would like to speak? I see Ms. Curly. Ms. Sandra Curly.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Sandra Curly, tax map parcel seventeen fifteen X. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. In response to my public comment number two at the September seven meeting, Fred Payne was adamant to assert that you had a written policy in effect for electronic participation at the June fifteen twenty twenty-two meeting. The following day, September eight, I emailed the board of supervisors and requested a copy of that policy. None of you responded to my email. I replied all to that email on September fifteen, reminding you that I requested a copy of the policy, had not received it and informed you that if you were intending for someone in the administration to provide the copy, that you would need to forward the email to that person for them to respond. Once again, none of you responded to my email and no one provided a copy of the policy. I again replied all earlier today. Still, none of you responded and no one provided a copy of the alleged policy. So that makes three emails in two weeks requesting one policy, receiving zero response. My request for the policy came because of discussion within this body at the last meeting. I stated the authority of my assertion that your June fifteen twenty twenty-two meeting was invalid is Virginia State Code two point two dash three seven oh eight point two C one, the one that was in effect until September first, twenty twenty-two, and the one that the June fifteen meeting fell under, clearly states that you must have a written policy in effect. I restated this in my email to you and included a link to the state code. At the meeting, Mr. Payne said that he could no longer allow this falsehood to persist and that you had a policy in effect. However, no one will produce said policy. During the discussion of September seventh, Supervisor Fairchild alluded to wanting closure on the issue. The June fifteen meeting took place three months ago. Its validity has been challenged during and since the June six meeting. You claim to have a policy that can potentially bring the closure that you all seem to desire to the issue, yet you fail to provide it. Mr. Plain Payne was clear that he felt that it was Corbin Flynn's opinion that the June fifteen meeting was invalid and that Mr. Flynn stated no authority. It is also my opinion and I stated authority, not only in the meeting on September seventh, but also in the meeting on October, on August seventeen. And I provided you with a copy of said authority. So now I will make it clear that it is Mr. Payne's and the board of supervisors opinion that your June fifteen meeting was under a written policy that allowed for electronic participation. But you have stated no authority because you refuse to provide a copy of said policy. Because you said so does not cut it. I have provided my proof, my authority, which happens to be state law. Yet you refuse to provide yours, which in my opinion leads me to believe you're hiding something. There seems to be no other rational reason you would not provide a policy that you referenced having in the. There seems to be no other rational reason you would not provide a policy that you referenced having and that you believe could bring closure to this issue. I want to see your authority. I showed you mine, now show me yours. And before you assert that I should file a FOIA to get it, I filed FOIAs requesting information in the past. But I should not have to file a FOIA to receive a policy that in a meeting you referenced having. It seems petty that you have a copy of a policy that you referenced and as a taxpayer asked for three times, but you refused to give to them. That is not transparency in government. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see Ms. Brittany Gray.
Good evening, Brittany Gray, 2 watt circle. I'm actually in the Riverside section, so just wanted to share my feedback. I've actually lived in Riverside on and off for 25 years and also wanted to share that it is certainly a concern. Pretty much any which way you're coming is a danger zone. So I, I don't have the answer or any sort of suggestion other than maybe a traffic circle. I'm sure people would hate to, to have that. But I don't, I think it could be good to slow down with the curves coming around the corner there. But I just wanted to share that it is a concern for my family as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else online? Anyone else in the building? Seeing none, I will now close the first round of public comments. There are no public hearings, so I will now move forward with action matters. A requesting part-time temporary clerk position be classified as permanent part-time deputy registrar position. Ms. Pace.
Good evening. Okay, um, we are asking for a part-time permanent position. What we have now is a clerk acting in this position, has been in this position, doing this, doing this position for a number of years. And so we'd like to have that position classified as permanent part-time. Um, as you all know, that the climate and the politics has really changed dramatically. Um, the voters are heightened, have a heightened awareness of um, the election process. They are calling for um, and emailing and requesting FOIA requests. We have a lot of individuals with, you know, just calling for information, which is very time consuming. The, we have a dramatic increase in mailings by third-party organizations and that causes a lot of confusion. We have to take time to answer questions from voters when they get conflicting information coming from a third-party organization. Um, we're required now more than ever, I'm sure you know, with cybersecurity awareness, that we have to be on our up and up with uh, knowing and being aware and watching out for fake uh, emails and such. We have to participate in webinars and, and tabletop exercises and conferences with Homeland Security, with the FBI, with cybersecurity and infrastructure security. Lot of these organizations as well as with the state police and just trying to keep up with all of those. It's very demanding. It's hard to operate an office with two full-time people and a half-part-time clerk. And to serve the citizens, we have at least, um, we have near 21,000 registered voters. So it's, it's very, very, it's different. I've been in this game for, you know, for a long time, since the eighties and seen a lot of changes. So um, we just cannot handle the magnitude of, of work we have with the personnel that we have on, on board at this time. We are having to do certification with uh, equipment. If you see here on the screen that we have an increase in registered voters since uh, 2015, we had 16,711. And in December of 2021, we had 20,347. So we've got inactive voters, um, that, that reduced our numbers in 2015. But as you can see, the trend, as we go down and look at what went on in 2016, prior to um, the, um, no excuse voting early. We had um, 13,668 total voters that voted in that presidential versus the 15,933 voters in 2020. So in the gubernatorial election, we tried to give you some, some facts there for 2017 where we had 9,244 total voters. And in 2021, we had 12,491 total voters in that election. So um, the election laws have increased since 2017. And the responsibilities that come along with those law changes make the processes more complicated. Again, so now this screen is not correct. Um, we gave you another, um, we gave you another sheet, I'm sorry. We gave you another sheet with the corrected amounts. We switched, it was a mistake made. And um, just to show you that in this graph, in 2016, the number of early voters we had, which were absentee voters at that time versus what we had in 2020, 2020, it skyrocketed.
And, and one thing we'll do, uh, me and Ms. Harris, so I copied the whole board package to my laptop. And she just updated the thing in the package, but so anyway, we have a, what you have in front of you is the correct copy. And what we do normally, we have presentations and we post after the fact, we'll post the correct presentation.
Basically, the red and blue got.
The orange, yeah, the orange and the blue did on the 2020. Yes. Sorry about that.
And it's 178%.
No, it's 453% increase. Yes, ma'am. And so this is another graph, kind of splitting it up from 2018 to 2021. Um, and you can just see the, the significance uh, in the increase of voter participation, which is good. But it's hard on a staff of two and a half people and one being a temporary part-time person. Alright, so the, some of the changes in the processes are that we have to handle an application, a single application more than once. And it used to be you, you mark, you put it in the, in the machine, in the, you registered them into the state's database and you were done. But now we're having to handle those applications more. We have to scan them. If there's someone that has an issue with their, there's an issue with their application, we have to try to contact them. A lot of times we don't have contact information. We have to send, send letters and hope that they will respond to them. Uh, we have to put them in a incomplete file until we can get those applications rectified. Absentee balloting now has changed so that voters have a number of days to get that ballot corrected. We have to contact each one of those voters if they didn't complete the back of their envelope. Didn't have a witness or for some reason that, that ballot is incomplete. It's called a curing system, a program where we have to notify the voter as many times as we can before the canvas is completed, to try to get them to come in and complete that ballot. Um, and then we can process it. So we're making phone calls, we're sending letters, we're doing a whole lot more to just get that voter's vote to count. We have to keep a log of all of that and all of that has to be in a, in a way that it's open to the public to see what we do. Um, we have to implement a pre-processing program where we are processing ballots, absentee ballots before the election, which we go to the point of having to check also for those, opening those um, outer envelopes, making sure that they completed the ballot envelope on the back and that they don't have to be cured. If they do, then we're contacting them, trying to find them. So it's, it's a lot of tedious work behind the scenes that um, the average voter would know of. A whole lot of this because of early voting has changed the life of the registrar's office. So um, the 45 days prior to is just like having an election day for 45 days. So you're preparing everything over, it's kind of like Groundhog Day. You're preparing the same thing over and over. And the accuracy that's required takes manpower. We work long hours. We even had in 2020, we had workers that ended up in the hospital. So you know, you can't operate in an office if you don't have trained personnel to step up. Even for me, um, speaking personally, I've had some, some personal issues um, in my family where I had to be out of the office. Well, if I don't have someone trained that can carry on, it takes more than one person to operate an office. So back to um, me to tell you all about my, my personal life. But um, just, just to point out that we need to have trained people, people that are reliable and dependable in the office to run it. It takes all year to operate or to hold an election. And so you can't just ask for part-time clerks that come in one day or twice a week and not know how the office operates. You have to have someone that's trained and know how to continue the process if I'm out or if my deputy is out. I see. So, and we did some comparisons with other localities. And so for us, we have two permanent part, two permanent positions and one part-time temporary. In Amherst, you can see where there are 22,630 registered voters there. They have a full-time permanent person and two part-time person, uh, two part-time permanent and three part-time temporary seasonal people. And they use them as needed. And Batac, 26,000. I won't go and read all of them, but you can see the comparison uh, that we did. Everybody is fighting their own battle because all of this is new for, for all offices. So we're all out here trying to get our, getting support, trying to get support, trying to get the, um, for you guys to understand, for the public to understand that um, we're in a different season and we need, we need personnel, reliable, um, trained personnel to keep the office running and to meet, um, meet the needs of the community. Any questions?
When did your staffing level go to what it is today?
It's been this way for a long time. The person that's been doing the position that's a temporary part-time has been doing what I'm requesting, but um, they've been doing it maybe 10 years, but never recognized. And as, you know, just always as a clerk and not recognized as um, a position that's been done on a ongoing business.
I think one thing to answer, so you're, she's got two part-time, I'm sorry, two full-time positions. Pace herself, plus an additional person. That second one was converted to full-time, I would say five, six years ago, maybe?
Maybe longer, but I had two.
Yeah, it was, it was, I think it was a 30-hour a week position and that position moved up to a 40-hour a week position, so.
There was an increase then.
What's that?
But there has been an increase.
A number of years ago.
Yeah, so it's, but since 2015 now.
Yes, and then, and then, and then the early voting.
And then we got hit with the 45.
Then the 45-day early voting and that's when the, the levels haven't really changed there. She's bringing in some more temporary people periodically, just because you have to have them during the 45 days. But, but more of a consistent permanent position, um, that hasn't been there. And, and so the position that's there, it's, it's a, it's a temporary part-time position. She's requesting a permanent part-time position. There's someone in the position and really what it does, it's probably a little more consistent hours. It would be required consistent hours. And there's some um, part-time leave and vacation accruals allowed with that position. That's, that's probably the biggest difference.
They've been doing the, the job as needed, but they've been serving for 20, with doing 20 hours when we're not in season and then 40-plus hours when we're in season. So that person's been doing this job for a long time.
Well, let me ask you this question. I know when we moved you over to the new, new office and that's all the guys moving the desk, I came over, there were more than three of you in there. What's the most you have working at one time?
Um, early voting that particular year, gosh, it could have been as just temporary for people for the um, early voting. Could have been.
Yeah, because that was.
15 plus.
There's like four or five folks were in there.
Oh, lots of people because they don't all work the same schedule.
Now, well, we have this year where a person can come in and register and then vote.
Same-day registration, yes, ma'am. That's another.
You see what, I, I don't see where that may not be a big hand because a lot of people don't even know that you can do that.
They will know that. I don't know that it'll be a big impact this year, but next year for sure. Like you said, a lot of people don't know that that law was passed, but. And it's another thing to keep up with all the laws. It's constantly changing. You have to keep personnel up to date. It's just, it's very challenging to have, it would be very challenging to have someone um, just coming in every so often, where this person has been working at least 20 hours a week and more for a long period of time. So they know exactly, they can, um, they can pick the ball up and run with it if something happens to me.
Anyone else?
The Board of Supervisors approve the reclassification of the temporary part-time registrar clerk position to a permanent part-time deputy registrar with the additional funding to come from FY23 personnel contingency.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Seager. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you very much, Ms. Pace.
Thank you all.
Um, B, authorization to advertise a public hearing for noise control ordinance, Mr. Doll.
Yeah, I'll go through a little bit of this, but I'll, I'll probably be filling in a friend here with Mr. Payne and then we have a, um.
I see we have a guest out there, some stranger.
We do have a guest, uh. Yeah, David Wells and then we got Captain Peterson here again, you know, prior to, prior to um, uh, Mr. Wells leaving, uh, leaving the county, well, leaving, leaving, leaving accounting, employment, not leaving the county. You know, him and Mr. Payne and the sheriff and then Mr. Heslop, they were really kind of working on a lot of this noise ordinance. And so I think both of them will kind of tag and you'll probably want to come up to answer any questions. But really the purpose of, of this action would be provide for a new standard for review of noise complaints with the sheriff. Please will be easier and more equitable to enforce as well as substitute civil penalties as specifically authorized by statute in lieu of current criminal penalties. And again, really staff is requesting authorization to advertise for a public hearing. Public hearing would be October 19th and, and what this is doing is repealing chapter, the, the existing noise ordinance, chapter 15.1, and then adding chapter 15.2 to regulate excessive noise and activities and provide for penalties and violations. So for a presentation, that's what I have, but from a, from a, from a ordinance standpoint, I mean, we can certainly bring up the ordinance. And uh, I know Mr. Fairchild had some questions earlier and I think, I think Mr. Payne and then the gentleman uh, out front probably answer some of these as well.
Chairman, maybe I can pick up the ball here. This ordinance has existed for some time. I think it was adopted in 2001. Um, and it has been some degree of problematic the whole time. The main thing that happened was in, in 2009, there was a Virginia Supreme Court case from Virginia Beach that uh, that declared a standard like the one we had for what constituted unlawful noise to be unconstitutionally vague. So with that in mind, we went back at about that time, about 2009. And uh, and the basis of the Supreme Court's opinion was that the um, the standard that was used would, if a reasonable person does this and, and it was a reasonable man standard, basically. Now, that's very common in, in uh, legislation. But the Supreme Court decided to hold Virginia Beach's feet to the fire and declared it unconstitutional. So we had to go back to the drawing board because ours was probably indistinguishable. And what we did was we adopted some very specific and quite rigorous testing. What it amounted to was we had a, we, we adopted a, a set of standards based on um, decibel counts with um, with sound. With um, with sound meters. And um, and I was. Um, I was and am firmly convinced that that standard would be upheld by the Supreme Court, um, under the Tanner case or otherwise. Problem with it is that it turned out that that had certain practical deficiencies to it. Um, and the, I, the, the officers can give you a good description of this. And by the way, former Major Wells, this was kind of his baby. So I was basically writing, writing down what. But the uh, um. The, the, the thrust of it was that in order to take the, the sound reading, you had to take two different readings. One was the sound. Without this intrusive sound. About, about it. So typically, in a, in a residential context, it would be. Early in the morning, late at night or something like that where, when a lot of traffic sounds, stuff like that, that gives you the baseline. And then you have to set up the, the equipment. While the, the noise was going on, you had to set it up certain distances away from it. And a certain height and various things like that, which are prescribed by the manufacturer of the equipment. And what they were finding was. Number one, they didn't know about the noise until it was too late to get a background reading. And then after that, it took a long time to set it up. And it was hard to do sometimes because, you know, it's a lot of training to operate these things. And um. Again, by the time they got readings, a lot of times the noise would be done. So what Major Wells did was he went out and found an ordinance. Which had a, what I consider to be a, an easily defensible. Standard that didn't involve taking measurements. And that was that. If there are certain kinds of noise applies to, certain kinds it doesn't apply to. So for example, it wouldn't apply to a, a fire engine sire. Um, and there are a number of other things. They are specified in, in, in the ordinance. They are sim- those, those exclusions and specific things that are covered are similar to what we have in existing ordinance. We've tweaked those a little bit. Because over the passage of time, we've gotten better language for it. But the two big things i- it provided for was for specified kinds of, of sound. The uh, if the noise can be heard. From inside the, the residence of a neighbor with the windows and doors closed, it's too noisy. And simple as that. Um, I think that's a perfectly defensible standard. The other thing we did, and yet it, but it's easily enforceable because. Believe they call the sheriff, the officer could go in, stand there in the living room and say, get all the doors closed and windows closed. Now can you hear? And if you could, there would be a violation. Uh, the other thing that, that is really a substantive change. And there are a number of, of small changes, but I won't get into all those tonight, but, but uh, the, the other change is the penalty. Because the original ordinance prescribed, prescribed as a class-one misdemeanor, which. Which is um, calls for up to twelve months in jail and a twenty-five hundred dollar fine. It was obvious to me, and I think the, the officers would agree, that no general district court judge is going to put somebody in jail for a simple noise violation. Um, and uh, if it's that bad, we got other remedies we can use like injunction and things like that. Um, the second thing is that since we have adopted, since we adopted that ordinance in two thousand nine. The, there's a statute been, been adopted, which specifically enables the county to regulate noise. And uh, part of that ordinance is prescribing the penalty. And the penalty prescribed in that statute is um, a. It's a table or whatever they call, uh, uh, a stan- set of standards for fines. Um, be civil fines. And no jail time. So, um, I think the officers agree with me that, that, that. That's a better penalty. It's more, it's more reasonable. Um, and it's, it's much more likely to be uh, effective, of course. So um. Remember, you're not talking about whether you're going to adopt it tonight. Talking about whether you want, you're going to submit it to public hearing. But um, the, the sheriff has asked for it and I, I can endorse this draft.
Like Monachello, he has to fast forward to. My special guest.
Do we have any questions from anyone about this?
Notice it only applies to your residents.
I have some. I wouldn't dare. Ask the lumber people behind my house and kind of trees that are dead six in the morning. I wouldn't dare. I'm just happy they're not throwing any trees in my yard. But um, that's not covered in here. I mean, I'm, you're not, I'm not going to walk, you don't want to stop someone's work. I mean, they have to get out there.
There's some timelines on that.
Yeah.
The timeline's not timeline, it's not construction.
Right. I think I see some six, women, construction. Yeah, so there. I understand I see is nine, but there, there are six. But. That's going to happen when you're in certain areas.
Just give you a little anecdote personally. One of the things that's exempted. Is lawful use of firearms, except during closed hours like at night, things like that. This past Saturday was the second Saturday of dove season. And um, the farm up on, on six hundred. That uh, it's a big farm. They, and you could tell they were going to have it because they cut it, they cut the crops in strips. And I had to go by there uh, later in the morning, but I knew it was there first thing in the morning because it woke me up. Because the uh, the shooting was, started early. And, and I, I heard it and realized what it was. And um, and it would have been lawful under this ordinance, assuming the timing was right. I think it was. But that's, that's the way it would work. And I think the officers need it, public wants it. And um, I think we'd ask you to order um, with the public hearing.
Any questions, anything else? So I, I think this came up. In, in large part because of um, uh, some people in my district um, at the. At the end of Poplar Spring Road down near Scottsville, had a concern about. A, a neighbor who they felt was doing a lot of different things that were obnoxious and loud. Which included firing off a weapon after twelve AM. And um, Eric was good enough to. Um, I asked him if he could meet with this community and we met at somebody's house and, and a pretty good portion of people came there. And um. And Eric expressed the struggles and concerns with, for example. You know, somebody shoots at two AM, but you're not there. And they set, set two shots up in the air. And by the time you get there, they're not doing it. And, and how do you enforce some of this? And enforceability seemed to be one of the struggles, the, the, the common theme. And um. Every citizen there made it clear, we move to the country for certain freedoms and abilities that. We didn't, we wouldn't have if we lived in more dense areas. And so it's, I think everybody gets, it's a real struggle of. Limiting what people can do in a country that's really tr- some of its very traditional things and, and um. And protecting the abilities of quality of life for, for their neighbors. And. So I, I've, I've just got specific uh, questions. So I was confused to the firearm piece of it, especially since that was the part of what brought this to the table. And uh, in the, excuse me, my eyes are dilated today. And then. Uh, my seat where Mike is now used to have a lot more light, so I've struggled a little bit. Uh, so, and specifically prohibited. Number eight, the discharge of firearms for target practice. Uh, function testing or recreation between the hours of nine PM and seven AM. Except as exempted by the provisions of section fifteen point two dash seven. Which says firearms, uh, by the way, under um, exempt sounds. Firearms, the lawful discharge of a firearm, except as prohibited by the provision of section fifteen point two. That's six, eight, which is the one I just read. Do I understand right that that says that Pluvana citizens can't shoot a firearm until seven AM?
You can't shoot it for the enumerated purposes. Uh, you can't sight into your gun at, at before.
Yeah.
You can't uh, you can't go out recreational shooting. You know, some people like just play cans, things like that. Um, and um, the other was, is function testing. So you, you broke your firing pin, you got it fixed, you want to check and see if it works. You can't do that. The, the, the other things that you can do are all otherwise regulated. Uh, so for example, burglar comes breaking in your house and you have to defend yourself, that's, that's not covered.
Hunting's got to define hours by half an hour before sunup and daybreak and a half an hour after sunset, I think.
Well, that, that's true, except, except for like coon hunting. Coon hunting is at night.
Correct.
Uh, so that, that sort of thing is um. Is already regulated by, by uh, state law.
So state law supersedes no matter what we would say, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Cause I, I just, the word recreational, the question came up today. Well, isn't hunting recreational? And.
It's not intended to. I think everybody on this board knows that I'm not about to regulate hunting excessively. And not be against my disposition.
And actually, as part of my response to it was that you're a big hunter. Um. But again, how did I, I had a hard time answering in saying, well, no, hunting wouldn't fall into recreational. It, but I understand as being a, correct me if I'm wrong, as being a Dillon State, we couldn't regulate it anyway, correct?
It has its own set of regulations.
But, but, but by state law, we couldn't super, we couldn't do anything that is more restrictive than the state.
Couldn't do anything. We couldn't, I don't think we could do anything on this day, this order.
Okay.
It, my only, my only exception about the shooting of guns is we might want to put something in there about New Year's Eve.
Well, I think it's an exception.
At midnight, there's been known to have your guns go off.
Yeah, but that shouldn't be happening with, with that kind of celebration shouldn't be happening. You want to, you know, you want to make some noise, that's one thing, but you ought to be using. Carbide cannon or blanks or something like that because it's dangerous to shoot up in the air.
Fourth of July.
Shooting just for the sake of shooting, not for hunting is not, to me, not recreational shooting. That's a, hunting is a separate distinct activity. We're talking about the guys that probably have a couple beers and go out at two AM and decide to go dump a magazine. Just to, because.
Sure. And, and I get, I do get that. While vague words in law can create concerns. Um, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, I've had to um, take care of keeping my chickens alive. You know, you go out to lock up your chickens and oops, there's a possum in there. So that's dark. I said, okay, if I kill.
That's, that's of awful purpose, yes ma'am.
Kill permit probably are. That's a defensive property.
That's a what?
Defensive property.
Okay. Oh, well, yes, I did. I used a four-ten.
If somebody has a kill permit for their crops or something of that nature.
Yeah.
They're allowed.
Maybe the wording was misconstrued was solely for the rec- by recreational shooter, just when they go out and decide at midnight they want to start.
I just bought this gun, I'm gonna go shoot an entire clip.
Well, one of the things that's, that's gotten very popular is people with particularly nine-millimeter pistols. Like to go out and see how fast they can empty the magazine. And they had a fifteen-shot magazine, bang, 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 bang. Um, and then that's, it didn't have any purpose to it. The guy just wants to operate. Now, I don't have a problem with, with, you know. Playing cowboy as long as it's safe, but, but it's, it's also, that's a nuisance to your neighbors. That's what we're talking about.
And what about animals? I saw something about barking. We used to have a lot of that problem, people with dogs.
I think we excluded barking animals because.
I didn't, I didn't see.
It's not in there.
Excluded. I don't think that's in there. And that was one of my questions.
Animals is ex- excluded.
But it's, I did see something, what did I say about animals?
It's in uh, fifteen point, point two dash seven, twelve.
Cause there's some annoying. Before six AM or seven AM.
Yeah.
Some annoying what?
Dogs is how do you differentiate between the dogs going to bark and the habitually a barking dog? That's. Like my current position, that's one thing I'm dealing with, but we deal with that on a policy side. Uh, but you know, what's the, every animal's going to bark if someone comes in your driveway, drives by, but the dog sits there all day. And barks eventually. So that's why that was potentially left out of this.
I, I can tell you mine, I know when I got a coyote in the yard. Cause mine are outside and mine will go nuts when a deer or coyote tries to come.
And so just basically, Mr. Payne summarized everything very clearly was. Under the old statute, we have people come to magistrate who have had documented habitual problems with their neighbors. Who were intentionally, or being just disruptive for the sake of being disruptive. And the magistrate looking at it like, well, what's your decimeter readings? And the part of the equipment is just purely unenforced.
That's the part I remember y'all came to us about and we all.
And I've been trying to do this for four or five years. Cause people get very annoyed with law enforcement, like, ah, yes, it's annoying, I agree with you, but I can't do anything about it because the code is written poorly. So the intent was at least if the people have the documents, they come to magistrate and get summoned. It's not a class-one misdemeanor, which is way too excessive for. This type of thing. But we've had literally calls with people like, you can't enforce it anyways. What are you going to do? And they sit there and crank it back up and rev their engines and just. Be very unablely for the sake of being unablely.
And again, I get the intent, especially um, because of that happening on Poplar Springs Road that kind of spawned a lot of this. I just. While at the same time, those people were saying to me, gosh, let's be careful what we're asking for and. I mean, it's, it's notable to me. Uh, fifteen point two dash five prohibited noise generally. No, no person shall permit, operate, or cause any. Uh, source of sound or sound generation. That is audible in any other person's residence with the doors and windows. Uh, to such other person's residence closed. That means in. Of course, like Monachello, let's spread it out a little bit, in Fox Hollow. That if you're in your driveway talking. And I can hear you in my bedroom, that does fall into that description, doesn't it?
No, I don't think so.
Why wouldn't it? That I shouldn't permit you to hear it inside of your closed house?
Look at the definitions section.
Where?
Noise.
Well, noise isn't right here at the four.
Yeah.
Any source of sound.
Well, you. If, if you have, if you have a neighbor that's talking in, in his driveway. And you can hear him in the house, so that, you know, it's, it's notable that he's sad. He's either talking pretty darn loud or you've got a very close pack, very close quarters.
I, I'm, I'm, I would disagree. Again, I'm even spread, I mean, spreading out from, from Lake Monachello, which. I, I can tell you, having lived there most of my life, I can hear people talking in your driveway and this applies to Lake Monachello. Um, but you stretch out to Fox Hollow, which is on bigger lots. Now, what if you're uh, waxing your car and. You have a radio lightly playing outside, or what if you're playing cornhole in your backyard and, and.
A radio, a radio is defined in here.
Okay. Where?
That's um. Fifteen point two dash six, number five.
I think the noise has to be excessive, not just commonality type of noise. This is adopted from Loudoun County ordinance.
I, I'll say though, fifteen um, point two dash six doesn't say excessive.
I'm sorry?
He, he said it has to be excessive. I said fifteen point two dash six does not say excessive. It says any noise.
Yeah, but if you look, if you. But noise is by definition above excessive. If you look right here on the screen, number four, the definition of noise means the term noise means any sound which is excessive.
I see.
It's trying to bounce everything out the best you can in this type of situation. That's why we. Kind of looked around for some that have stood some legal test and we found the one in Loudoun County. They kind of based it off of that model.
Well, you know, there are going to be variables in this and, and I don't see any way to avoid those.
Yeah.
Because, for example, my house is, is particularly well-built and. A lot of times, if we have the doors and windows closed. In our house, and our dog's in the backyard, we can't hear him in the backyard. Now, that's not true of a lot of houses. So there's going to be variation on these things, but I don't know how to make a standard that would be meaningful and useful. That would be any better than what's here.
I, I, I do get it. I, I just also got to, I can just imagine. Over the next days, hearing from constituents going, what? You said I can't do what in my backyard and. And I just want to be able to understand it and defend it.
Well, there's not much that you, that you can't do. You can't do it at certain times of the day. Like, um, or night. Well.
A lot of it does say after nine or so, it prohibits. But I, I had not, I had not picked up on that, that piece about in excess or whatever it said that in the noise definition.
So from the enforcement side, for us to go out there and take a complaint, that's the first thing we're gonna ask. Excessive, articulate that to us, or it's excessive because obviously we have public cause, it would be excessive. And even if they go up to the magistrate, they're gonna have to provide that, like, were they whispering? They're whispering, we're not gonna enforce this action, obviously.
Yeah.
If you go before the magistrate, the magistrate's gonna say, give me the detail of what happened. If they were whispering, neighbors were whispering versus they were screaming at each other and doing other things. And obviously that's excessive, there's more going on, just screaming back and forth. So.
Yeah.
But the key word in that is, but the definition of noise, which is our key, key, one of the, as you look at it, element of, it's not criminal, but element, element of this action, the definition of noise will be our key deciding factor on how we enforce it and how it goes to private magistrate.
And as in, I was, it does, I was in Lake Monticello a few weeks back at nighttime and there was a person across the street on the phone just blasting the F-bomb, screaming at somebody and so on. And, and I thought to myself, these people have a right to call Lake Monticello police to say this, something doesn't feel good in the, in the neighborhood, so.
All righty, and, and we're just doing this so we can have the public hearing.
That's correct.
You know, this is just opening door for those folks that want to come in and tell us how they feel. So.
Okay.
Any other question? Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors approve an authorization to advertise a public hearing for an ordinance to repeal chapter fifteen point one of the Flavanna County Code and add a new chapter fifteen point two and its place to regulate excessive noise and attract and activities related thereto and to provide for penalties for violations thereof.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Fairchild, signed by Ms. Booker, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five, even I do have to tell you, my neighbor is listening tonight. One day his wife looked at him and said, you need to go over there and check on Mike and the family. Somebody's screaming, he goes, no, that's just Mike singing while he's cutting the grass. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
About five minutes to seven, quarter after seven, I know two bus, school buses pull in and out of uh, Riverside. If you ever have an officer have the opportunity to sit over there and just watch some of the chaos sometimes, because I've been passed twice.
I do not have enforcement authority on South Boston Road.
It's okay, but you, you. You get scared to mess out of them. And, and a lot of times, a little bit of fear goes a long way.
Not as long as you used to, but.
Yes, sir. Agree with that one, thank y'all. Uh, next up is C. Revised Board of Supervisors mission statement, Mr. Dahl.
Yeah, so, so a, a little rehash at, at, at planning retreat, you know, there was some discussion about, um, uh, you know, possibly, you know, adding some language to our existing mission statement. So the current mission statement, which was adopted in twenty sixteen, says Flavanna County is committed to providing excellent quality of life for our citizens and businesses through delivery of competitive public services and programs in an efficient and effective manner. Now, a lot of the discussion, oops, I can't do that. A lot of the discussion around the first part of that, you know, talking about committing, providing excellent quality of life for citizens and businesses. The board generally was, was, was fine with that, but it was more the, the latter part of the mission statement, talking about competitive public services and inefficient and effective manner. So after kind of going back to the drawing board and, and this Harris did some word sniffing on this, uh, for us here a little bit. So basically, number one, option number one here in these rendered board package. Option number one, again, the, the letters in red represent what is new. So the first part is, is the same that we, that we currently have. It says Flavanna County is committed to providing excellent quality of life for our citizens and businesses through the efficient delivery of core, we said competitive before, now we said delivery of core services and programs while preserving the unique identity and rural character of the county. So that's, that the latter is kind of what changed. Under option two, again, the first part is still the same and just the letters in red talk about, um, Flavanna County is committed to providing excellent quality of life for our citizens and businesses through attractive, efficient, and effective core services and programs while preserving the rural character of the county. So that's that. Option three talks about, it's basically the same as, as number one above. The only difference is it really puts the statement in the present tense versus the, the past. You know, where the option one says is committed to providing, whereas number three says provides. We're just getting ready to say Flavanna County provides an excellent quality of life. Um, and we're doing it now and, and that's, that's kind of what the statement says. Under option four, um, option four is really the same as number three above, but we just get rid of citizens and businesses. So option four is Flavanna County provides an excellent quality of life through the efficient delivery of services and programs, while preserving the unique identity and rural character of the county. So again, you know, we just kind of heard the board trying to include some language, you know, we talked about, you know, the county's identity, talking about the rural character. And option four, this kind of really streamlines things, saying, we, we provide an excellent quality of life right now. And, and so those were the four that we came up with, again, trying to not change it dramatically, but, but kind of hear what, what, what the board was kind of requesting, kind of wanted to see in there, so. Or if there's something, some other variation, but I, I, I thought we came up with some, some good alternatives to kind of what is currently there. So that's, that's kind of what we have with the board, and the board said they wanted to look at revising it. And so those, those are the options that we.
Is, is there one that sticks out to anyone?
I think one's pretty clean and clear and it, I like that it's to the point. It says core services and programs, which is what the government should be about. And it commits to preserving them as they all do our rural character.
I, I agree with Mr. Fairchild.
Ms. Booker.
What is? What does unique identity mean to you?
Oh, sorry.
To me?
Yeah, what's unique identity?
It's, we're not like Charlottesville, we're not like Albemarle.
Well, I was sitting on the end of a fishing pier this week.
You were what?
Literally Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, I was sitting on the end of a fishing pier and I go all the way to Nag's Head. First guy I stopped and talked to lived in Shannon Hill. The second one I talked to at the bait shop lived in Amelia. And that's one thing that we were talking about, you know, our rural character, one stoplight. And Amelia goes, well, we got one flash caution light. I said, yeah, you got more than us. I said, do you have any traffic circles? Said, we got three of them. So we were just comparing and I, I think that's what the unique is. And, um, unique. Now, I know we're not unique, I know this is rather narrow minded of me to say, but I think we've got a great core group of people that live in Flavanna County.
This is God's country.
I believed it my whole life, is why I'm still here.
My opinion is that, you know, mission statement should be short and sweet. Um, and again, I said this before, I think we defined the character and the goals of the county and our, you know, comprehensive plans that we upgrade every five years. And I just don't see the point of making the change myself, but I'm not voted on that, so that's just my opinion.
I know, three is short.
You know, the only difference between one and three is the word committed. And now, when I looked at it, I said, one, one or three, I could live with either one.
I mean, or, I, I could do.
We're, we're splitting hairs, talking back to different, we do, but I, I liked what you said. One talks about how we've been that way for a long time and we have. But somehow the use of the word committed. Like, I think I might need to be committed.
You might what?
Need to be committed. That's what my wife tells me that quite often.
I mean, I, I mean, I, I'm good with either one. Provides is, is current, so it's, it's a little. I, I, I feel like committed is, is more of, what is our mission? A, a mission is to do something different, to, to forge forward on something.
And you're thinking number three then as well, since with the word provides, talking about the future?
I think committed is more, more towards the future. It's more, here's what we're committed to for our future compared to, hey, we're already doing it on number three, but I'm okay with either one.
All right, well, I mean, I, I, I don't care.
I, I, I'm still a fan of one.
I think the, the challenge is, you, you know, are you going to be called hypocritical when you have, you know, commercial and industrial growth happening in certain parts of the county? Are they gonna say you're not committed to the rural character of the county? You know, because you put this in your mission statement. We define that again in our comprehensive plan through our both areas and say, here, well, we are gonna have that kind of growth. So for me, again, the, the argument of including a phrase in a mission statement, which is then later identified somewhere else is a mistake. Uh, certainly would say that the word committed highlights the fact that you are in fact being hypocritical if you pursue down those roads and, and allow for growth in those areas.
I, I would say, and anything that would come in front of me on the board, um, it will be vetted in, in part to how it affects our unique identity and rural character of the county.
And I would say that I would vet it against how it helps to improve and maintain the core services and programs for the county and preserve the citizens at a cost effective and efficient manner.
And, and that's what I said in part, because there are different items that I would vet towards it and this is.
All righty, so we know we're not gonna come up with one, it's gonna suit everybody, one size fits all. Do we have a motion for any of these?
I'm, I move the Board of Supervisors adopt the revised mission statement, option number one as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Fairchild, signed by Ms. Ziegler, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes for one. All righty, next up, Mr. O'Brien was the only name. Uh, D twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Board of Supervisors, two-year plan, Mr. Dahl.
That one, Ms. Harris.
Ms. Harris.
If you'd rather have him, I'm okay with that. Good evening. It seems like it's been a little bit of time since I've been up here and I'm gonna keep it brief, so now it's up to you to keep it brief. So, um, I am happy to bring back, um, a, a combo together version of the, the goals and plans that you discussed at the retreat on August twenty-seventh. It looks similar to what we've done in the past with the strategic initiatives, but if you've been around me at all, you know, I like to say they are neither strategic nor initiative. So we like the goals and the two-year plan. However, I'm not wed to it, so if you want to call it something different, I'm open to that, too. Maintain the same categories that we had had with the, um, with the strategic initiatives, although I did change one of the categories slightly, um, community development, I, I forget what the whole thing was now, um.
It was community development, economic, development, economic, development and tourism, and we tweaked the community itself in, in, in riches.
Shorter, better.
Yeah, it, it seemed to, we were having some trouble getting everything in there or making it fit in the other categories. So I have, they are laid out exactly the same. The only difference that we added this year was we indicated whether they were gonna happen in year one or year two. Of course, year one, we only have a few months left of that, so that is the end of twenty twenty-one and year two, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Anything happened in the last two and a half years, it could have been twenty years ago or six months ago, I'm completely confused on the year. So, um, the same numbering, uh, we've added a, a column for whether it's been completed, uh, identified the goal and the category that it's under, whether it's gonna happen in year one or year two, and then whatever nodes that might be beneficial. Or both years, or both years. And one other change, um, before we start going through the, would you advance one please, just one slide or two? So where is before some of these categories, some of the identified goals, um, there might have been three identified goals as we looked over them, we realized some of these actually went together. So in the, um, project management, just using the Palmyra Village Streetscape as an example, uh, review and pursue opportunities and options for Palmyra Village became a subset of um, the Palmyra Village Streetscape with the second one. So we cobbled them together, put them where they fit and, and moved along. So, um, let's go through them to remind you of what you discussed and also bring it to the attention of the public for the first time. I can't read what's on my script, what's on my paper, so I'm gonna apologize for looking at the screen while I do this. We kept A one, worked with the FRA, the Fire and Rescue Association, to identify support options for fire and rescue volunteers. Whatever specific goals there might have been under that probably won't happen in twenty twenty, whatever this year is, what is this year, twenty twenty-one? Twenty-two, um, but we'll start after the first of the year, so, um, don't be laughing at me. Um, so that it got moved to year two. Um, A two, perform comprehensive review of existing partnerships with local area support and nonprofit groups, providing services to Flavanna residents, review service gaps and identify needed partnerships. That was added, the identifying gaps and needed partnerships. There may be folks who are doing work in the county that we haven't identified, that don't come to the interagency council meetings that we want to find out who they are, specifically thinking of, um, church-based groups who may be helping more than just the, the membership of their own church. We just don't know about them, we want to know so we can get people where they need to go. I, I have mentioned this to the interagency council, that as they begin their budget review process and coming forward, that we may be a little bit more detailed with what they're being asked to bring forward. If they have annual reports, please provide those with that, so begun talking to them about that. Um, A three, initiate comprehensive review of traffic throughout the county with a particular focus on high traffic areas around the Lake Monticello community. You've begun doing that already. Last meeting, you approved the, uh, comprehensive, uh, comprehensive safety action plan grant application with the TJ PDC, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. And tonight on the consent agenda, you have another item requesting V dot, um, zone consent? That was the resolution, well, anyway, to, to get the safety study, um, on Route six hundred, so you've actually already doing some of those things.
The, the only thing I would add to that is um, those that we put into, or V dot.
Smart scale.
Smart scale that did not get approved, like the intersection at Troy Road and Route fifteen. I, I, I don't just, I, I don't like, unless we have to leave it at just around Lake Monticello. There, there are other.
Oh, yeah.
Ruhrton Lake and fifty-three. You know, that we need to have a study of all
Yeah, we.
Intersections that are, that are, that are.
Right.
Their problems.
Problems, like.
Problems and concerns.
Problem charges.
Yeah. Those ideas are big, because.
Cause I mean, you know, we don't want anybody to think it is, we're only looking there. We're looking around the county and those are the ones that right now we can define, horn and finger it.
So if I change that to say initiate comprehensive review of high traffic volume, high volume traffic areas throughout the county with a particular focus on, on areas around Lake Monticello, would that more closely?
I said, I just want to make sure we got.
Got it.
It's not just looking at that area. I mean, because my highest traffic road in Flavanna is Route fifteen. Or at least it was three years ago. I figured.
Um, A four, oops, okay, I will be reading off my paper.
Mr. Dahl's picture backup.
Very broadly, A four is community transportation options and alternatives and that.
All right, hold on, we may be, okay, we're back, all right. I just wanted to make sure we weren't dead on line.
That captures many different, um, options. We talked in the, you talked in the retreat about shared school bus and drivers providing transportation for county residents, TJ PDC Rural Transportation Work Group and Jaunt, so that, that just encapsulated a whole bunch. And I believe that was one of the ones that had, um, previously independent entries of this that we brought together under one, community transportation options and alternatives.
That's what the Reverend was talking about apart, thanks Reverend.
We just happen to have John here this evening too to do.
I already looked at that.
Um, A five, implement annual county volunteer recognition ceremony. And I don't think we can get anything done in this year, work on that next year, whatever that year might be. Um, A six, design implementation plan for professional fire chief position. In the retreat, you talked about how the, the, um, the, the review, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm blanking on what that was called. That had been done and now it was time to actually look at that and move forward with whatever recommendations there were, or to hash out how you were gonna move forward with that. So that's what that came out of. and move forward with whatever recommendations there were or to hash out how you were going to move forward with that. So that's what that came out of. Moving on to B, communication, develop communication plan to inform residents of county projects, accomplishments and where the tax dollars are spent. I think you've heard me say many times, I am always looking for ways to improve communication. So that is not going to stop. And it really should have a little X in year one as well, because that's not something I'm waiting until year two. But as far as a specific instrument to get out to people, that will happen in in the next year. Project management, C one, continue Columbia area renewal efforts. You certainly heard tonight that that is wanted. If we had any question at all, that is a desired thing. C two, complete a master water and sewer plan, Plan Phase One, to identify sources for the county's long-term water needs, particularly for each of its community planning areas. I believe that's nearly complete.
Pretty much when we come to the board, we're the final water and sewer ordinance. I think we're going to come with the with the finalized plan, too. I mean, Dewberry already came present kind of master water and sewer plan, but there's an actual box.
So we get to check that one off pretty soon. C three, continue the Palmyra Village Streetscape. So Phase One, that project will begin in twenty twenty-five, which will address street flow sidewalks and street parking on Stone Jill Street side of Civil War Park. Phase two will bring in crosswalks, sidewalks and parking on Main Street. And then there, you know, to below that, so the C three point one, that was a smart skill award that was granted, that that's a check mark. C three point two, you had mentioned that you wanted to look for other ways to civic displays, flags or banners of some sort that really highlighted will really anything residents, historically important residents or students who were graduating.
Do we have that same option?
We do have that same option under Fork Union. C four, successfully oversee and manage the Flavanna County aspects of the James River Water Project. It's it's moving right along, getting ready to enter into Phase Two Archaeological Surveying. So pretty excited about that. And that's about all I can say about it is it's moving. It's not stalled at the moment. It's actually moving. Successfully oversee and manage the design and construction of design crossroads, water and sewer system. Eric, do you want to provide any update on that or not? Checkmark is coming soon. C six, pursue Fork Union revitalization. I I think we discussed that there wasn't a lot happening with VDOT-related activities, but you did mention the civic displays, flags, banners, notable residents, et cetera. So we threw that one in there. And of course, any of these, as we move along, can be added, too. I mean, a great opportunity comes up and we just can jump on that. C seven, oversee new administration building project. This is obviously a multi-year project, although there is hope that C seven point one create an issue, an RFP for design will happen before the end of this year. And then C seven point two would be the selection of the design of the firm for the design for the new administration building in the next year. So there's some actionable items there that can hopefully begin to take shape. Moving on to D, community development enrichment, D one, draft a left too many words in there, draft a formal county-wide economic development tourism strategy inclusive of an implementation schedule. D one point one is adopt an economic development strategic plan, which you will hopefully do tonight. And then the one point two, D one point two would be to implement a five-year economic development strategic plan, which would happen after the first of the year. D two, seek opportunities to coordinate development activity at Flavanna's northern border with Louisa County. I think that's something that continues pretty much all the time anyway, always looking for options. No specific project identified there. D three, hold an economic development discussion forum for local businesses with planning zoning, building inspections and infrastructure components potentially before the end of this year. Once the design crossroads water system comes online, that will be a thing that can happen pretty quickly and and get folks in there to talk about that.
And you know, we had even talked about even potentially doing some like some ribbon cutting or something like that. Maybe we have the tap flowing and waters just flowing out of it or something. That's how they know that that we're ready for visible. But anyway, you know, to to kind of to kind of bring bring some attention to that, you know, get get businesses out, get developers out so they you know, send you mass questions and then get the information out there.
People will believe it when they see it.
A little bit of that. Maybe they'll see it when they believe it. D four, investigate options for utilizing the Dominion Proffer of five hundred thousand dollars for recreation and green space. That'll be an ongoing discussion until it's identified. D five, investigate opportunities to support expanded recreation opportunities, arts and tourism. So this is another one that we combined several of the previous goals, coordination with state agencies regarding the installation of additional boat ramps along the Ryvan and James Rivers, Fridays after five at Pleasant Grove, those sorts of things, all kind of fell under this idea of expanded opportunities, whether it be recreation, arts or tourism.
The river is a dividing point between Kenstone and Fourteenth.
Well.
Alright.
The profit money is very wide open.
Good point. D seven, implement stronger code enforcement on the county's spot blight abatement program. That's happening.
Yeah, we do that right there. Well, I mean, stronger, yes, I mean, to do even stronger that, I mean, you know, citizens are already reporting on on properties that are blinded or help has or or concern. You know, to to do much stronger, you know, you you'd have to have a a dedicated full-time person for that. But the county's approach to spotlight was was based upon a
Complaint driven.
I hate to go back to this, I'm sorry. Just real quick, should we include PVCC possibly with the teaching forum at Pleasant Grove? Going back to what you had talked about that was one time.
Interestingly, we talked about that with PVC. The new PVCC president came by the offices yesterday and we threw that out there. And I said, I I said to quote, I'm pretty sure our board chair would be very dissatisfied with me if I did not at least bring this to your attention. And they were receptive, so. Let's see, D eight, review the subdivision ordinance on cluster subdivisions, large lot subdivisions.
And I think that's really going to come come before the board, really after the cop plan is done and everything. So the cop link gets done first and then that's kind of a a second phase down. We're only, that's why we have that here, too.
Did I skip D six altogether and just not even read it out loud? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I circled PG Park and wrote in Fork Union and then completely skipped over the fact that I hadn't read it. Dina, of course, I don't know what year it is either. What do you expect from me? D eight was the cluster subdivisions, large lot subdivisions. D nine, review the zoning ordinance to look at higher density options between CPAs and R four designations, which I think what Mr. Doll just spoke about, the D eight probably goes for that as well. And finally, financial stewardship and efficiency. E one, reduce the county's reliance on creating and mailing paper checks for payments and implementation implementation of expanded ACH EFT transaction options functioning within thirty days. E two, implement credit card payment option for citizens at all county funds collection points through munis cash sharing process.
We just had a meeting between myself, Miss Leonard, IT, finance, just to kind of look at. We had an RFP for our current provider, but we're working out some contractual issues and we don't get them worked out in a short manner. We're we're also looking at some other
Are you talking about the checks?
No, this is for 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 a credit card processor.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah. I mean, really, really, nothing get too deep in the weeds, but really for Miss Leonard's office, it's really finding finding an application that is a seamless integration within our current financial system. So they're not having to do one entry here from a credit card standpoint and then do another separate entry from the financial system standpoint. And so there's just some complications with with credit card processors, contractual things and 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 vendors that really other vendors that that they're that they're credit card processing systems implement and 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 function right into me this.
So maybe this is for deeper for another time, but as we know, Linda did email the entire board and you about this and and I've had conversations with her about it and as she said, I guess we won't have it active for the next, for the through the end of the year. And
For this next December, no.
Yeah. And I'm just a layman being on the outside of it. I I think about how many municipalities must have all these things work properly already. And it just seems like it's just really going on for a long time to make this thing happen.
Yeah, well, I mean, some of them, some of them do the, some of them do do the two-step process. Some of them may have the thing where they have to do the entry in there and the entry in in our financial system. You know, one thing that Miss Leonard said is, you know, one, she wants to find a system that everything's integrated. It's 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 a one-step process. So like I said, we just had a meeting, it was, I think it was I don't know, it was either Monday or I think it was Monday, protection. We met with Miss Leonard about this. So she's reaching out to some of her counterparts, you know, for instance, you know, we have Munis Tyler Technologies for our financial system in our tax. You know, Goochelnet, Goochel has the same thing. Louisa has, actually, Louisa Tax, they don't, they don't use Munis for their tax. But Orange County has, I think, Miss Leonard was going to try and one, reach out to the Orange County Treasurer and see what are they using and just kind of go go visit with them and see what how that how that works into their system. So it's it's a matter of trying to find the credit card processor and in the localities that have the same type of financial system that we have. So. But yeah, no, it's it's trust me, it's
And last but not least, plan for ways to adequately fund, implement and standardize the capital improvement plan, eliminating deferred CIP projects. So those were your identified goals for the next sixteen months or whatever it is. What did I miss? What did I incorrectly summarize or cobble together? Or what would you like me to add?
I think we went through it as you went through. Can y'all think of anything else that needs to be added? I can't. Thank you so much.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Alrighty, do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors, adopt the Board's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three two-year plan as presented.
Motion is made by Mrs. Booker, seconded by Mrs. Ziegler, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next up is E, Economic Development Strategic Plan, Ms. Schmick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So unlike Ms. Harris, I can't see the screen, so I'm going to take my glasses off. Okay, so we're going to talk about the economic development strategic plan. We go through everything kind of all over again, just a little bit for the public's information as well. The strategic plan development timeline, we we started this process July twenty twenty-one. The county approved a contract with Platinum PR Sandy Dubay to facilitate the creation of an economic development strategic plan that was put on hold with the the my predecessor leaving and me coming in. We picked it back up December, January and January twenty twenty-two Platinum PR held interviews with members of the Board of Supervisors, the Economic Development Authority. In addition, we had three focus group sessions that were conducted. One group was comprised of county staff. And we had two groups of community stakeholders. These community stakeholders included businesses, residents, community organizations, educators and industry partners. Data was collected from these meetings and was used to draft the strategic goals that I brought to you April twenty-two, twenty-two. Platinum PR presented the proposed economic development strategic goals to the board. And we received feedback. From there, we transitioned and brought to you in August twenty twenty-two the at the Board of Supervisors Retreat, the draft economic development strategic plan. So the vision and goals reflect the data-driven objectives identified during this planning period. And we'll go over the vision now. The vision for the strategic growth, a focus on people, prosperity and place-making will support a vibrant economic, excuse me, a vibrant economy and enhance our quality of life. People is the first one. We're going to improve employment opportunities to elevate residents and businesses. Position economic or jumping ahead, position Flaviana County's workforce to for success. For success through skills development, develop talent attraction initiatives to grow opportunities in Flavanna County and showcase residential real estate to attract, retain and grow available talent. Prosperity, we're going to attract and retain industries and advance our communities. Retain existing industries that build upon our strengths. Attract growth-oriented sectors aligning with our economic objectives. These sectors include business and financial services, light manufacturing, transportation and logistics, agribusiness, food processing and technology, health services, forest and wood products. These were all identified in a study that was done by the Central Virginia Economic Development Partnership. We're also going to foster sorry, foster entrepreneurship within Flavanna County. A robust commitment to entrepreneurship will help Flavanna keep pace with the evolving needs of businesses, residents and the workforce. Will improve the variety of commercial real estate options to support businesses, business attraction, retention and expansion opportunities, place-making. We will enhance the spaces where people live, work, play in Flavanna County. We're prioritize the infrastructure to meet the needs of residents and businesses and leverage tourism assets to boost visitor appeal. And so out of this, we also created four strategic goals that have been identified to shape the economic growth and community prosperity in Flavanna County. The first goal is to position Flavanna County as a business-friendly county with competitive assets in the central Virginia region. And we're going to do that by reorganizing and communicating steps of streamlined and standardized business permitting process to new and existing businesses in Flavanna County. I'm having a terrible time reading this, y'all. It's like really design potential business incentive offerings in Flavanna County. We're going to promote the the Flavanna County Shuffle Ready Sites Program to landowners, businesses and the community at large to encourage the creation of higher-tiered pad-ready sites in Flavanna County. And we're going to continue to promote and invest in key growth areas in Flavanna County, including but not limited to the Fork Union area, Columbia, Palmyra and Zion's Crossroads area. Goal two, we're going to foster entrepreneurship, business growth and expansion in Flavanna County through business retention efforts. Going to continue to collaborate at the regional level to provide programs and services, share resources and assets to reduce the costs and improve quality. We're going to formalize a county business retention expansion program. Again, that's one that we're actually already doing, but we're going to get it on paper. We're going to create a business database of existing businesses for tracking business metrics in Flavanna County. We did strike the all businesses as per your request at the the retreat. We're going to support and advocate and promote the new community commercial kitchen that is underway. We've got some dual permitting we're going to do between the Virginia Department of Agriculture and the Department of Health. We're going to explore entrepreneurial support opportunities such as the development of a coworking space, business incubator or maker space. We're going to work towards the creation of a new position geared towards marketing and tourism promotion and business retention within the Flavanna County Economic Development Office. We're going to develop a comprehensive hazard mitigation plan for businesses within Flavanna County. On to goal three, we're going to develop new and enhance existing tourism experiences, activities and events in Flavanna County to increase tourism attraction. We're going to do this by advising and implementing a shop local incentives program. That has actually already been started, too. We, Brian actually started the from Flavanna. We also have a online business database as well. We also have a online business database as well. We're gonna promote local experiences and agritourism, viticulture, artisans, events, parks and outdoor recreation. And we're gonna also research and apply for grants to support tourism initiatives in Fluviana County. Lastly, our goal four, um, we're gonna support Fluviana County businesses with talent retention and, and retention. Sorry, talent recruitment and attention cha- retention challenges. We're gonna establish partnerships with local educational institutions and workforce partners to develop a talent pipeline to fit. Local skills needs. We're gonna advocate for the Fluviana County business community as the community addresses its infrastructure challenges. In addition to all of that, we did include um, a, a final portion to the, the plan. Um, that's new to you. Um, to assist in achieving these goals, we plan to leverage our relationships with these particular partners. Um, so we have uh, Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development, Central Virginia Small Business Development Center. The Community Investment Collaborative, the Fluviana Chamber of Commerce. The Fluviana County uh, Economic Development and Tourism Advisory Committee. Fluviana County Economic Development Authority, uh, Fluviana County Public Schools, Fork Union Military Academy. Piedmont Virginia Community College, Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, uh, Virginia Career Works. Virginia Cooperative Extension, Virginia Department of Agriculture and Community or Consumer Services, also known as VDAX. Um, and BDP, which is the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. There, I'm gonna open it for questions. That's a lot to, to go over again.
I, I would like to go back to number three. Uh, promote the local experiences. I think I asked this question before. We have artisans, but we do not address the performing and visual arts, which is this building right here. Um, this is a great economic driver. Whenever we can get back into, that's why I'm so adamant about us getting out of this building. So that we can do those kinds of things. There's some art on the wall back there. But artisan is different from the arts of performing and visual arts. And I think it definitely should be recognized because we have an art center. Um, here in Fluviana County with this nice auditorium. I think they just put up a brand-new huge screen. A new screen today.
Yeah.
And they're doing some other work.
Yeah, it's gonna be the projector.
Yeah.
Um. This place has so many qualities that where we can bring in plays and all kinds of things. And people can get out in the community and spend their money and it's an economic drive. But we've got to get out of this building to let these people do their work.
Anything else?
I've got a few things, but first I wanted to mention, can we not set up some sort of like little pedestal light on this thing or something? Cause I noticed this with different people. And again, and I was kidding earlier, but uh, seriously, going from there to here. Is a major light difference. Um.
Going from where Ms. Booker is to here.
Yeah.
It's a struggle.
And, and I can just imagine there, I mean, there's no light to see what you have. I was just wondering if we can get something that clips on to the end with a little.
We can, we too, and, and we noticed too that there was something weird with the lighting settings here. Because it's lighter in that back corner where it's darker in that corner. So the, the normal settings that we normally have, it's.
It's right, it's not on here.
I, I, I know, like I said, so.
Yeah.
It's some, some challenges that we found as we came in here today and, and we're not as familiar with all the, I mean, there's the giant light board up there that we had it set.
Sure.
Set in a certain way, but yeah, we can, we can look at that.
Thank you. It is a struggle.
Yeah, we knew you could.
Alrighty, well, I have, I have something. So one, the mission statement will of course change now that we've changed our mission statement, correct? So that'll be updated in there. Um, two, I, I've got real concern with number three, code showcase. Uh, residential real estate in, to attract, retain and grow available talent.
Which one is that?
Number three, uh, on the, under people. Um. When I first read last year, uh, the term, that, that the county had used the term workforce housing. On building and attract workforce housing. You know, I used to be Chair of the Economic Development Commission. And our, our charge was to get business to subsidize. The burden on the rooftops. And that's what we always hear in Fluvan is get more businesses to take some of the pressure off the residences. But then we talk about bringing in more residences to, uh, so we can get more businesses. And then once we have more residences, then we need more businesses to take the pressure off of the residences. And it just, you know, people need business, business need people, people need business. And we just keep becoming what everybody's trying not to become. And, and so I, I don't, I'm not one to say, let's attract. And try to bring people, more people to live in to Fluviana County. Um. And TJ PDC, you know, it, it quotes them and uh, in this. Uh, section. And much of what TJ PDC is about is. It, it says it in their first paragraph of their housing plan, that their last sentence in it talks about um. Something to the effect of us having the, all the municipalities taking on. Uh, all types of residential growth. So one municipality doesn't bear all the burden. In other words, they're saying, so Charlottesville area doesn't bear all the burden. Burden, they call it themselves, burden of that type of housing that they're trying to get us to accept and take on here. And so I don't, and it will come up for me in the comprehensive plan discussions. I don't buy into that we need to bring more people to create this prosperity. And especially when it's being directed to us by TJ PDC. And I don't mean that as an overarching statement about TJ PDC. There's plenty of good they do. I just disagree with them about plenty within the, the housing PC. So when we're, when this is an economic plan and we're saying, bring in more people. That will create more burden. I just don't think it should be there.
I would like to bring in more people to fork in. I mean, they, you know, you have to look at the, the different areas. I mean, we have developments that haven't been developed because. We can't get people there. We don't have a grocery store because there are not enough people. They use the stores that we've had as convenience stores. I run in here and get my six-pack of beer when I needed uh, uh, tomatoes and so forth. So I do want some growth in, in.
Be like, hey, just be, I'm sorry, Mozzot, I didn't interrupt. She's asking more page. Um, and, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So how do you, how do you fan out? You, when you're talking, are you talking about strictly the northern part of the county? Are you talking about the entire county?
I'm talking entire, um, because, and you and I have had this conversation recently. And I understand that one, and I hear it a lot from people in the Fork Union area. But when you bring in more residential growth, so you can get those stores, now you, now all those people will pay more taxes.
And I think, again, I think the county needs to do a study on this because I, I think it's, it is something that is a common sort of fallacy out there. If this was the case, then Albemarle County would be stone-broke, right? Because they have more residences and people than we have. Not every county falls into a trap. Where residents inevitably result in more costs. Okay, that is not a true statement across the board. You can do the math and you can look at the type of resident, you can look at how many services, the amount of, uh, the, the wages that they earn. The type of household that's there, all of those things determine whether or not one individual or one household individual adds a burden. In the course of the time of that, uh, of that student's lifetime within the county. Um, it, it's just, it's, it's, it's this, this idea that we can close our doors. And not have any, any further growth in terms of housing in Fluviana County is frankly a little bit absurd, right? I mean, there are people that want to move to this county. There are landowners that own land here that want to sell and develop their property. There are people that would like to have their kids living next door to them. We can't control the growth. In fact, Fluvana County over the last decade has had one of the slowest periods in the last fifty years at one point six percent. The decade before that was equally pretty slow at about four percent. So it's not as if we're exploding out of control.
Actually, that's not true. The decade before that was such a.
Decade before that was also around four point six percent. Maybe it's six percent.
Yeah.
But it's pretty low between the two decades. The decade before that, it was twenty-three percent. So that's when it was very high at that point in time. But, you know, we as a county have to look into the needs of the residents. Um, and, and, and in, in terms of workforce development, well, I'm on the Go Virginia Board. That's a conversation that's been had at the, at the Richmond level and saying, we don't have enough affordable housing. And we say affordable, doesn't mean Section A, doesn't mean, it's just that the balance of the types of houses that are available in that area. In order to attract people to live in a particular area, where those jobs are they gonna be, right? That's, that's basically what you're trying to do when you create this balance between housing, jobs, retail. Opportunity, schools or services, right? You're trying to create that balance. When you have periods of high level of growth, such as when we had that, you know, twenty years ago, twenty, twenty-five years ago. During that period of time, yes, it's hard to adjust and adapt them. But if we hadn't built a new high school, our tax rate would still be very low, right? Cause that's one of the big burdens on it. But we had to build a new high school, right? We had to build a new high school in part because it was a really old high school before that. Been around for fifty years, you know? Um, you know, but I, I just think this idea of simply. Saying that, you know, Fluvana County must maintain its rural nature no matter what, okay? It shouldn't have any growth. It shouldn't allow any new development is, is not what Fluvana County is. That to me is not what it is. Part of what makes Fluvana County great and brilliant is the fact that we have people that come from all kinds of different places. Is the fact that we respect the areas that we brought. The fact that we have diversity is a form of Lake Monticello, in the form of Kent Store. In the form of Fork Union, in the form of Columbia. We have that diversity. Is a very big and growing county. We've invested millions of dollars to try to bring economic development into the area. And there it has to be a balance between the two of economic development and growth. Now, I don't think it's any, anybody's intention on this board to take a limited amount of water that's coming from ZXR and allocate it towards housing. So we have, within the comprehensive plan, we have regulations that say, here's the amount of growth that can happen. And we're limiting it from that standpoint, you know, but these kinds of conversations shouldn't be in economic development plans.
I agree.
I don't, you know, I, I think that.
I thought you just said they shouldn't be, or they should be, you said.
Right?
You said they should not be in this conversation.
The, the idea that we are going to say housing growth is part of our economic development plan is separate. That's part of the comprehensive plan again. How we grow is part of a comprehensive plan.
I'm not meaning to interrupt, I'm trying to clarify what you're saying. Are you saying it should not be a part of this conversation or it should be?
That specifically saying that we shouldn't have, okay, because you're saying we wanna highlight and attract the type of a, a, a. Living opportunities that are in the county. You object to that, right? You say, I don't wanna highlight the fact that we're a good place to live.
As a part of economic development.
Economic development, right?
Right?
But people that wanna move into this area, they wanna know what kind of county it is. They wanna know what kind of homes are available. They wanna know if it's a good place. Wanna know if there's good schools there, right? So we should be highlighting that, right? That's part of the economic package that we offer as a county. We have good schools. We have great parks. We have great police and sheriff's office. We have responsive fire and core services. We have a diversity of neighborhoods. We have a diversity of housing available. Those should be the things that are part of our economic development package. But not saying, hey, let's not highlight what's great about Fluvana. Let's not talk about growing Fluvana. Cause, you know, we don't want growth. I mean, that in itself puts a stop to economic development in my opinion. You know, the minute you go out and say to an employer, we're not gonna change, we're not gonna grow, chances are they're not gonna come here. You know, that's my opinion.
So I, I was talking about, I didn't say anything about restricting, I said about asking, attracting. It says, you know, about attracting that type of growth. Um, and. So I didn't say stop growth in any way, nor did I even suggest it. What I said was to, to ask for. What I see as the adverse to what we're, um, the reason we're trying to get economic development. It just, it's simple numbers to me. Um, and, and we, as a county, just, everybody's aware. Of Colonial Circle and the hundred and twenty-four apartments that are going in there that are government subsidized. So to say that's not the type of stuff we mean, while it's Fluvana's first government subsidized housing. And done all in part, the conversations that happened at this board and, and throughout government was about workforce housing. And the citizens are saying, plenty of citizens are saying, I'm uncomfortable with that. And, and so we're, we're bringing on. This workforce housing, it's gonna create a substantial, substantially greater financial burden. And it is true, and I agree, let's get the numbers. We'll just disagree, but on whether it's true or not. That rooftops bring more financial burden on a municipality. But uh. Pretty much everybody I've talked to in government agrees with that, including our former commissioner of revenue. That, uh, first I ever heard it was when he stood up in front of the Board of Supervisors. And uh, Mr. Loving said it to the Board of Supervisors, and he gave an exact number. Here's the burden that this creates with every new household.
So, so answer this, act totally. How come some of the largest counties with the largest populations are some of the most successful counties? How does that correlate?
How do you define success? They, they have high taxes.
If, if you, if you look at it and you say automatically that a house is a burden, so therefore county shouldn't have housing, right? Because they'll fail.
But I didn't say that, by the way. I didn't say the county shouldn't have houses. I said we shouldn't be as a part of an economic, an economic plan. That's created to relieve the burden of houses, also say, let's bring more houses. And so how you define their prosperity, um, you know, I, you said it before. Look at all the different taxes that Albemarle and other counties pay in addition to just property tax. So, um, I don't wanna become Albemarle. If, if, if that's prosperity, that's not for me. And when it costs us more to get there, then I don't see the benefit. And so I don't wanna encourage that being in our, in our plan.
To me, when I read that statement that you're talking about, I don't think it's saying build more houses.
Are you talking about the?
The showcase residential real estate, and I think that's the one you're talking about, Mr. Rock, correct?
Correct.
Showcase residential real estate to attract, retain and grow available talent.
To attract and grow talent.
Okay, people. Chris, hang on, I'm talking.
Uh, no, don't be rude, it's a conversation.
Let me say what.
I agree, it's a conversation.
Did I say what I wanted to say before you interrupt?
Wait, then give me the, then give me the go when you're done.
I will.
Okay.
Try to be civil. To me, all it says is it's trying to attack, attract, not attack, excuse me, attract people that are. I'm trying to figure out the best way to put this. Upper-level jobs, not building new houses, just to showcase the houses that we have already. Then that's where, that's when I read that and see, okay, go ahead.
It's, it is, first of all, I wanna say, we all in conversations have times where we don't wait until. Uh, a person finishes a sentence, it's conversation. And it's not, it's not always interrupting, it's conversational. We all do it. And so we gotta be careful about each time we use that one, cause then we end up doing it to somebody else. It, uh, when we talk about, when it says attract and grow, that's people. When it says available talent, of talent is people, that says attract and grow people.
Okay, we have people that leave every day. And that, that's the way I look at it now. People can look at it and see it any way they want. And for the most part, three of us have sat here and listened to two of y'all have this conversation. And we've been very respectful. That's the first time I went to say something. And before I said anything, I was gutted off.
Well, I just.
That's the first time I went to say something.
Right.
And so I think you just said exactly what I was trying to say. Retain or attract talent. High-paying jobs, things of that nature, people that are gonna fill high-paying jobs. And I, I, like I said. I'm not a big fan of building houses everywhere either. People know that. Yep, I was the deciding vote on Colonial subdivision, Colonial Circle subdivision. Because I've looked at that as a place where our kids that we're losing, that graduate from high school and have no place to live. When they first get out, except at home, as a place for them to have an apartment. when they first get out, except at home, as a place for them to have an apartment, things of that nature. So we keep and retain the talent that we produce.
So there was a, I was walking to the football game the other day and I'm all that meant. Just, you know, walking down Alderman towards the, towards the stadium there. There was a thirteen hundred square foot home. I ventured gas, if you guys can figure out what that house was being sold for. Thirteen hundred square foot home built in the nineteen fifties.
Seven hundred thousand?
Seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Yeah. So the, the challenge is that, you know, Charlottesville has become so expensive that people can't live in Charlottesville any longer. And they push that out to the surrounding counties and surrounding counties don't have inventory and they become expensive and they get pushed out even further. And so then to Mr. Sheridan's point, you know, you have maybe your son who wants to live here, or even my daughter. You know, maybe your daughter in the center will live here, but they can't afford to buy a starter home. You know, they can't even come up with a down payment for it. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that, you know? So having housing that addresses the opportunity for somebody to live in the area. Uh, and in some cases you can define that as subsidized. In this case, it was sixty or seventy percent of AMI, which is pretty high up there since we have pretty high AMI to begin with, of sixty-six thousand dollars, sixty-eight thousand dollars, I think. Um, you know, that, that was a, a need. Most studies now show that when you, when you take subsidized housing and you incorporate and mix it with regular housing, you get a better outcome than with concentrated subsidized housing all over the area. I think Colonial Circle is going to be a great success. Pinnacle Group does a really good job. You know, I don't think we should be afraid of embracing different types of housing needs. Um, you know, I think we have to look at it and say, if we expect workforce enough, the governor wants to add a half million new job. That's people, you know, sets out as a mandate for, you know, the, the, the state of Virginia in terms of its growth goals. And we have to expect that out of that half a million people, we might get three or two thousand, maybe only five hundred people that moved to Flavata County. But they'll be part of what comes into Flavata County. Again, I think that, that if you look at, you know, Go Virginia, you look at, at economic development and you can tell me I'm wrong if you like. That the correlation between housing and jobs is a very tight correlation. The availability and affordability of housing is a very tight correlation in terms of attracting employers. Because they need to know that if they're only paying twenty-two dollars an hour, their employees are going to be able to live in that particular area. You know, that's their model, their business model. That's what they have to figure out and do. So it's important that we have housing that matches up with the economic goals that we have. And I think that's an important statement. That's all I have to say about it.
And, and my one last question would be, so all you're saying is, and we've spent a long time discussing this. You want to, you don't think this is the place that this belongs? Is that what both of y'all said?
No, I think it does belong there.
In economic development. Cause I don't think that someone's talking about housing.
It's people. I'm not talking about houses. And you, when you attract more people, it means you need more houses. And the word talent is, is a replacement for people and attract and grow available people.
Is that, is that what that means? Um.
Oh, it could mean, um, the way I read it too.
Would you interpret that, please?
Um, the way I would interpret it is, um, retain and grow. So that could be growing our, our young youth, right? Here in, in Flavata, um, or bringing them back after college.
Right.
Um, but then attract, to your point, yes, I mean, we will be attracting, um, the jobs for some high manufacturing type company.
But I got it this way too. I mean, again, if we are attracting, we have people that are in this community that are retiring or, or maybe that they want to downsize from the community and the houses that they're in. One, we have great residential, existing great residential real estate and we want to, again, we want to attract people to come here, that if someone moves out, we want to, we want this to be a great place for people to be able to live and work in this community. And so that's, again, under this, under this topic, it's to talk about people. And it says improve employment opportunities to elevate residents and businesses. So there may be a, a component of, of, of attraction and, and growth, but I think, I don't think that's, that I don't think that's the whole driver of this necessarily, or the meaning behind it.
Well, I just mentioned also in the housing. Um, they quote that, they quote a study from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And then the same paragraph talks about eleven thousand forty-seven housing units. It, the paragraph itself acknowledges that attracting, uh, talent is, equates to housing. That's the, that's a paragraph that's in this. So, so we can, we can discuss, I, I, I'm, I'm just saying, Mike, when you say you don't, you don't necessarily think that is housing. This says attracting, you know, people in the effect of housing.
You're saying eleven thousand new dwellings here?
I'm, no, no, I'm saying, uh, two thousand eighteen uh, evaluation of eleven thousand forty-seven housing units in Flavata County revealed the following. And I'm saying this section discusses, uh, when attracting those people, what that means to housing. So it, it says in itself that that is, the people equate to housing.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, you know, I think we should move on, but I mean, honestly, if, if the, if, if there is not a clear understanding between the correlation of workforce, housing and jobs, then, then I, I, I think in, in my opinion, we won't see the type of growth either economically, uh, uh, and we want to attract the type of businesses that ultimately help to relieve the burden. Um, you know, the, the fact of the matter is that we can have one business that can substantially change, you know, our tax burden base. Um, you know, but the question is, how do you come in and attract that one business? What are their needs? What are they going to do? You know, in Fork Union, as Mrs. Booker pointed out, and in Columbia, perhaps there's lots of people that would like to find higher paying jobs that they can't afford to do that, where they don't have to commute into Richmond and back and forth. We as a county need to be, uh, you know, forward thinking and housing is part of that being forward thinking. Doesn't automatically mean that we open the doors to ten thousand new people coming to Flavata County. It does mean that in the relationship between our economic objectives, that we keep in mind what our housing uh, inventory, um, and what our housing costs are and how they'll correlate in terms of these jobs that are coming into the area.
I, I think that, um, I am for affordable housing, but at the same time, um, I think what happened when we voted on Colonial Circle, the fact that it was a half a billion dollar company and they won't be paying taxes for ten years and then they'll only be paying partial taxes. I don't think that was fair to the others, people who are here living in homes and paying taxes.
You know, that's a, a decision the board took. It's already been taken. We also turned down another housing, uh, apartment development where they asked for no tax relief. Just turned it down. So, you know, uh,
That makes sense.
I mean, at the time, that was the only, the only people that offered since I've been on the board. I don't know, Mrs. Booker, you've been on the board longer. I don't know how many times an apartment building has come up as an option for Flavata County.
But we do have a lot of homes that are affordable.
Uh, I mean, maybe, I don't know, you know?
I don't see them.
But, but statistically, Flavata does not have an affordable housing issue. That's, I mean.
No, no, but, but, but rent prices have, have increased dramatically. Um, you know, that, that, that is the case. Housing prices have increased about twenty-five percent in the last year and have continued to grow. Um, you know, so, and I mean, granted, they fell back and we need to happen, you know, catch back up. I'm not saying that that's not the case. You know, but a, a, again, anecdotally, if you look at the fact that townhomes are being sold for half a million dollars on Pantop's Mountain, right? You know, um, that's just a townhome. You're going to see that expansion of, of, the, the, of housing costs going up. And part of that boils down to the fact that, you know, counties and boards like ours, you know, have, um, you know, to, I want to say artificially restrict growth. They try to control the growth. But depending on the needs and the conversations that are happening in those counties, you can come up with shortages. And right now, uh, there's an article that I think was in Forbes that basically said, you know, housing prices are starting to come down. Rents are still going up and that's probably not going to change. And the reason is, is because there is about a six million home shortfall in the United States right now. And we haven't kept up with kind of just the general demand of housing. And so you're going to continue to see these kinds of ebbs and flows. Um, and, and, you know, in our area in central Virginia, housing is going to be, you know, expensive. And then that's not necessarily, you know, the end of the world, but it, it, you know, it also depends on the kinds of jobs that you're trying to bring into the area. So I, I just think it's an important part of the conversation as an economic development part. I don't think we should be.
All right.
All right. Going, going back to the plan, is there something that we want pulled or stricken or? I mean, right now we're just focusing on a plan and we've supposed to be like ten minutes and we've been about thirty now, I think. And the poor guy's back there from John sitting there patient. They wait. And I'm not trying to say that it needs us rush to it, but let's go back to what we're looking at.
Well, and I, and I believe this is very important and, and.
That being said, I agree.
And I'm not going to say I'm talking, but I was in, in a sentence. So I, I, and, and see, Mike, that's what we got to be careful about, because we can get, end up doing that detail.
Just, I just want us to move forward.
I hear you. So I feel that number three should be wiped from the plan. I don't, I think it's misplaced to be a part of the economic development uh, strategic plan.
I disagree.
Who, who agrees or disagrees?
I disagree. It should be there.
Ms. Eager, you said you were for, for portable housing or whatever, but do you want it stricken or?
Um, and this is my thoughts.
Just fine. Okay. Well, you got three fines. Okay. That's why I said, just, and I'm not cutting it short. This is a conversation we have at another time, but I'm just trying to move forward.
Yeah.
All righty, do we have a motion?
I move the board of supervisors adopt the FY twenty twenty-three, FY twenty twenty-eight Economic Development Strategic Plan and present.
We have a motion made by Ms. Booker, seconded by Mr. O'Brien, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes four one, Mr. Fairchild being the only one, the name. F V dot safety study on South Boston Road.
Again, I'll be quick. We talked about this a little earlier. Again, you, let me just go back. We, we know what we're talking about.
Yes.
Here's the intersection. Here's, um, Broken Island Road. Here's Lake Monticello Road. What we're requesting is for V dot to do the safety study along this stretch, um, from basically, and when we added some additional language in the resolution and I'll show you that really quick. But again, taking it from here, going all the way to here, and you know, it's going to take a little while and V dot will determine what are, what are some improvements in that. Either whether it's signage, whether it's some clearing or, or other things like that or speed.
What would it take to add in Crofton? I mean, the others have all been looked at. A lot. I don't know if Crofton's ever been looked at. I'm telling you, I pull out of that thing and take a left turn twice a day and it scares the living bejesus out of me.
You know what we can do is, I mean, I, I could.
Come back later or check with them.
Yeah, I mean, this is more.
I don't want to booger up the process.
Really what they said is, they said if there's a particular intersection, you're really kind of looking at, take that and maybe go a half mile either way. And so this really takes it kind of a half mile either way. You know, if we want to do a safety study or speed study at another location, we could certainly do that as well.
How long does it usually take them to do this?
It's probably, if I had to guess, um, I'm trying to think of some other things. I mean, I, I, I would imagine probably four months, two to four months is, is probably closer to four months is my guess.
Hmm. Wow. Seems like.
Here, they did it. So.
They, they supposedly done some sort of traffic study around.
They looked at some stuff, but speaking to Scott Thornton, the V dot representative, he says, he, he doesn't show that a, a safety study was done on the stretch here.
All right. And then the only other con I would have, should we not go a little bit further down on the straightaway where you're bumping into Broken Island there? Cause that's.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, if the board thinks we go, I don't know, maybe up.
I'm just saying, just because that's, if you stop right there, I mean, it just seems like that.
Those people are stopping at that point. Yeah.
We got to take the study a little bit further.
Yeah, we can, we could do that. We could maybe take it up to where the new proposed entrances for the, for the other, uh, building that's being built.
Yeah.
If, if, if the board's fine with that, we can, we can tweak the language. That's just, that's just kind of administrative on our part. So, so looking at the resolution.
That other board building is being built just on top of the hill and have good line of sight in both directions.
So the only thing we change in the resolution is, is just a second, whereas, whereas the board supervisors feel, feels there's a need for appropriate safety study on Route six hundred South Boston Road. From before the intersection of Route ten forty Broken Island Road, traveling no north or on Route six hundred South Boston Road to the intersection at Route six eighteen Lake Monticello Road as a current intersection of River Ridge Drive and Riverside Gate. It's hazardous. It needs to be evaluated for any safety and speed concerns. So that's kind of what we added to the resolution. And, and, you know, I, I know we had, um, a resident out here speaking. I, I wouldn't be doing my part if I didn't say. I, I did receive an email regarding a differing opinion too, basically saying that, that there were some residents that lived in that side that didn't feel that that intersection was, was an issue. And I think some people, you know, some people's thoughts were, you know, they don't have any issues coming out of there. So, so again, I, I just wanted to at least bring up that, that. Said I did get some comments, uh, from a differing perspective.
Yeah, I think the, the, the challenge is, is, you know, something like that. If, if I always took a right hand turn out of Riverside Gate, I might not be as concerned about it, right? Cause I have time and I'm behind me. But if I'm taking a left, then it's a little bit more of a concern. If I'm coming out the other way and I'm taking a right, then maybe it's a, I mean, taking a left there, then maybe it's a little bit more concern. So as, as we know, those left hand turns are the deadly ones.
All opinions matter. The right hand ones almost become deadly at least twice. I've been passed by one coming from
Yeah, I agree.
The tractor supply. And the other day I pulled out, taking a right and the person pulling out of Riverside decided they wanted to get in front of the bus. So they took a left and went down to turn lane to pass me.
It's great. So dangerous.
No idea what thought, thought process was in your mind.
Can we make a motion?
Motion.
Please.
I move the board of supervisors adopt a resolution pressing a safety stay at Route six hundred South Boston Road. In the Palmyra District around and beyond the intersection of River Ridge Drive and the Riverside Gate, Lake Monticello.
Was that you, Ms. Eager?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I got it. Went, motion's made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Seeger, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. No appointments? And finally, is it Wright? Jaunt presentation, Mr. Ted Wright.
Uh, thank you for your, thank you for your time. Um, yes, my name is Ted Reek. Um, I really appreciate, I really appreciate you letting me be here today. I want to recognize Hal Morgan on our board. Uh, he's been here, um, on our board for quite a while, a big supporter of transit in Flavata. My controlling this with you.
I just want to go.
Oh, next slide please. Uh, basically John's mission is to, uh, give people independence, allows them to live their own lives on their own terms, uh, with dignity. Uh, not everybody is able to, uh, afford to have a car or operate a car or, or should drive a car. And, uh, we give them an oper- uh, 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 an option. And thanks to your funding of that service, you're providing, um, independence to a number of people. Next slide. And over the years since nineteen seventy-five, when John began, we accumulated quite a bit of experience in this particular area. Uh, when you look at, uh, our workforce, we, of our drivers especially, we have over five hundred and forty-six years of experience. Uh, we operate in seven jurisdictions throughout the area, uh, have over about a hundred.
Last year, it was just into June thirty, uh, people used John for basically two reasons, make money and spend money. Uh, we served quite a few, uh, employment here, so forty-eight percent of the people who go last year, uh, were going to work in some time. And the other, uh, other ten percent or sixteen percent were involved in shopping. So it's economic stimulus. And that's pretty good. Uh, we only operate service within the county, uh, three days a week. On Monday, Wednesday and Fridays. Uh, and then we provide this length service from Flavata to two thousand miles south to the place. Uh, I think it's room for more, uh, service, believable, visit that at a different time. Thanks. Again, we give people an opportunity to live independently, give older people, um, um, I have an older mom, um, they want to live independently. They don't want to spend time with kids, uh, to go to fight games or shopping, they want to live at home. I have an older mom, um, they want to live independently. They don't want to depend on their kids uh to go to fight games or shopping, they want to live on their own terms. And caregivers uh would like to give independence to their parents, but also they have lives themselves and they, you know, that John solves two issues. It helps the, you know, caregivers and helps the person being cared for. I think we also promote uh help the outcomes of providing access to medical services and I think we can give them care. Uh, if they don't have that access, then they wait, they bill, they wait. And they have to call ABMT in order to um meet the medical need. We hopefully provide events on that. And again, provide a much higher quality of life, again, because of the investment, the talent, it's like. We also give an opportunity for people to live in a more dignified way. Other studies that say that you can spend more than 50% of your income on housing transportation. Uh, you're in a difficult situation. There are quite a few people that have to make a choice between keeping a car on the road if they go to work or buying groceries or buying shoes for the kids or, or going to the doctor. Uh, there is a margin of people that are living on the edge. With uh John, we're able to reduce that transportation cost and get people enough familiarity of to live a better life and be able to live. Next slide. And finally, I think it's a good investor, not only in giving people out in that community. Uh, it's the gentleman from Columbia uh mentioned uh need to uh get people out of, of that community. Uh, the investment in transit really turns over seven times. Every dollar invested in transit, that dollar gets spent seven times. So if you spend 40,000 dollars in transit, that's like spending 280,000 dollars. In the case of Fluvana, uh your investment in transit um for not buying the benefits and uh we're able to provide free time to handle service because we're able to leverage federal state grants and. Uh, we're not resting now on our current situation. We want to get better and improve ourselves. Um, the first thing is, next slide. Is we're looking at alternatively fuel, you have a lot of discussion about green house gases and climate change, or we're trying to uh not contribute to that. Uh, we want to reduce the greenhouse emissions that our services provide, uh produce uh by 45% by point three. So we're looking at hydrogen fuel, vehicles, uh fuel, fuel cells, electric vehicles as well as compressed natural gas. We're studying each of those alternatives. See, see which ones makes more sense than John provides the best uh return on those. Next slide. Also, people's side travel needs are changing. Uh, we offer Uber. Um, way you use John today is you make a reservation, uh usually a day or two in advance. Uh, what we want to do is provide spontaneous travel so that same day you want to go somewhere, you can book trip. Hopefully, in the mobile phone or call in, we can provide a trip either way. We're looking at providing that kind of a service, a private service area, and hopefully someday that will be applied to our job or to Fluvana. Excellent. We're also doing a five year transit plan. I'm determining the needs of the county, both now and in the future. Uh, we need uh up against a study, thinking of the huge transit most where they live, where they want to go. This map kind of aggregates a number of factors. Uh, the darker the blue, uh the more need there is for transit, the more uh marketer is. And you can see in Fluvana, quite a few areas uh have a high need for transit, they'll, 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 they'll. Next slide. Focusing on older people, again, the darker the green, uh the higher the population, but everything's all. Uh, these are just some of the factors that we're looking at as part of our, our new, uh, new plan. Next slide. And we want to promote our services. We're trying to recover from COVID and we're applying some commercials and I think we're doing quite a bit. Yeah.
I like those buses. Yeah.
Sometimes you're gonna click play audio.
Go ahead and sing, Mr. Reese. You can do the song. You can do the song. Can you sing the song?
Hopefully it'll be better than my neighbor when I sing Cudney Grant. Is it just music or is it words?
Yeah, I am. Yeah, I mean, I, I know when we played it previously, just on the B C without everything else, it worked. And we, and we sent the board a link to this in an email. Let's do that. We'll forward the mail to you with this link so you can.
Yeah, the file is too big to actually email. So anyway, we, we have three versions of that commercial. It kind of highlights what we do, how long we've been doing it. We're running it on the agency. It's a possibility it's all linked in the spring of 2023, so maybe I'll go see that.
Sure, you've seen us around, but have we been formally introduced since?
Yep, that's all I have.
Are there any questions?
Do you have any kind of price point for that micro transit that you're looking at?
I mean, in terms of uh holding my car and why? Yeah, I just don't have that information. Currently, John is fare free. Um, though I think uh for this type of service, we make a charge, something a couple of dollars, if we have to subsidize, maybe take Uber anywhere is probably dependent for a $15 trip. So we couldn't get anybody charged that to people. So uh usually my, they're a few dollars or whatever. We have to study that and figure that out. Go on a place up in into Fluvano, through the, during all the process of the gift, people speak that and.
When you, when you, um, your service, does, um, I had a constituent who asked for help. And um he needed to go to his physician up on Pan Tops and they said that they would pick him up like on his way to work, make your appointment around 10:00. So he would have to get on John early in the morning and then they wouldn't pick him up and bring him home until the end of the workday. So you can't do that to a person with, you know, on, on a walker. It's supposed to do sit up to, you know, some care all day.
Well, we uh have very limited service, but they mentioned we're like providing service in the county three days a week. In the, in the county to the city service, we're going two days a week. And we only provide a trip in the morning and a trip coming back in the afternoon. There's nothing in the pool. So.
So it's really not viable for an older person.
Uh, that particular purpose maybe not. Hopefully, I should have explained it before we made that connection. But uh if there's a need, as our planning process progresses, and there seems to be a need for more service, we can certainly bring it to the administration, uh see if there's room to budget to do more. Uh, but uh but that's probably the best solutions.
Like a mid.
We're already very fair about service.
Yeah. Like a mid day run would be good for people like that.
Yes.
And then the micro transit, I mean, I, I know we're maybe, maybe a little early on some of that conversation, but like for, for that one, I mean, that sounds like that would be something that would be ideal for the situation that Mrs. Eager is talking about. Now, would that be, you're talking maybe it would be a couple of dollars. Are you talking a couple of dollars locally within Fluvan or if someone had to take a trip from Fluvan to Charlotte?
Well, that would be, would be more for that distance. Uh, that would be the user's cost, the actual cost.
Yeah.
Be more than that. They're looking at pilot study in the Pan Tops area, in the Hollymere area. And I think they're predicting uh costs from the beginning around, I would say 45 dollars a rider. And now the users aren't going to pay that. It's going to be subsidized by the state. Uh, but that, but it's an extensive service. Uh, so we're trying to balance that with uh more efficient. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Thank you for waiting patiently. Alrighty. Yes. Um, next up is H 20 2022 Fluvana County Fair Review, Mr. Spitzer.
I, I, I don't know TV.
Good.
Alright, so I'm just here to give a brief, like an overview of what kind of happened at the fair this year. Um, the theme today may be help needed. Um, so this guy, this year the kind of here, we did 700, 7,148 paying guests. So our numbers would have been more, but I had to take staff from our gates on Friday night at seven o'clock and Saturday night at eight o'clock because we didn't have enough staff to work the parking area of the carnival. My main job is to get people off 53 and get them into the park. And if I don't have, I didn't have enough staff to be able to do that and take money at the gate on those nights.
Wow.
Um, I mean, so we would have, we probably had more than 8,000 visitors. If you think about the money that we wanted to collect, that's how we tell how many people come in. Plus on Wednesday night, we don't take money. Um, it's just a carnival only. So we, you know, we had some people there that night and then Thursday it is 18, 17 and under are free for that night. So we did not take money for this.
That's a pepper only night.
And then we didn't have as many of attractions for like bigger attractions and stuff. So any questions about our.
Did you have a, then you have a time for special needs kids?
We did. Um, that'd be a little, but we did it.
Oh, you do that?
Yep. It's on Friday, it's in the 12.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think we had about 50 this year.
That's nice.
Schools and there are a couple older nursing home groups that came.
That's right. That's, that's really.
So we get a little bit of both.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you can see the parking lot does not justify what we had to park. Um, where if you go to the park, you see where we normally move. We were down three telephone poles from the entrance of the park. So that is bush hogging down 53. The issue with that is people have a long way to walk to get to our main gate and then get back to the car. So we're looking at a way to maybe park cars on the other side of the road next year. We're closer to the school and maybe we could use the school as an exit as long as our, our exit for better flow, flow trap. Sorry. Um, next slide. So I'm going to go over the parks and recs expenses and revenues as well as the fair boards. So you can read advertise in terms of contract services, you know, 16,533 dollars and 81. So. Um, it would have been a little bit more, but we got a donation from Boon Line. The parks are wrecked. We usually don't take in donations, sponsorship. We let the fair board do that. That is how they um are able to pay for a lot of their services they provide. But we had to do it this year because Boon Line needed information for, for tax purposes. And the fair board was able when they. Well, the fair board's almost there to be able to give them information. They weren't quite there. So we took that and used that to pay for about thousands. So it's usually going to be more than a thousand dollars people spend, but with that, that's kind of how we came to that number. Um, and these are, I think, parts of Rick. Um, these are the what?
Revenues.
Revenue, sorry. These are our parks and revenues. So our gate sales were up, I think about $5,000 last year as well as the carnival sales rights. Um, the carnival sales rights has to do with their $20 this year, so 15, but that had to do with gas prices, the prices for the vendor to be able to provide, provide the service. So our revenue was 35,333 dollars and 57. Um, we'll go over a little bit of the fair boards, expenses, the revenues. So this kind of shows you everything that the fair board is in charge of, but not for the event. They do all the entertainment. They, they take the chicken job, beer garden, the radios, um barrel train, penceins. We did get parking out for one night. Um, it was through the Boy Scouts. We couldn't find anybody else to help us. So unfortunately, me, my staff and the fair board were in the parking lot parking cars. When that happens, we aren't able to provide the service we need to with some of the events that are going on. So we have to leave it to the people that are actually going to events, run the event, and we're not able to help. Which really puts us in a bind. Um, so their total expenses was 32,862 dollars and a half. Um, as I mentioned before, they get their revenues from sponsors. You can see all the sponsors that are on the right. Um, our biggest sponsor was A and P Construction and Estinate Communications. They gave 12,500 dollars to you. Does that really help the fair board get a good chunk of money to be able to move from one year to another without wondering how they're going to pay themselves? Because according to what, we are a rainy day away from being wiped out of like 15,000 dollars in a day if it rained on Saturday. So that's a way for them to be able to have some in the bank. They get a dollar from every gate sales. So that's how we came up with the 7,148 people that came into the park. And other activities they held were coral turret excavator, car rule therapy, Virginia chat with the big success and the radio. Um, their revenue was 74,818 dollars. So the radio we're gonna, we're having an issue with. We don't have enough seating in our radio. Um, they were seven, I was told. I never made it out of radio this year. They, I was told they were seven rows deep at the radio, which makes it hard for the sea from five, six, seven rows back. Um, we take leechers from the schools as well as our leechers, but they're only about four high. The issue is we don't have elevated seating for people. We looked into getting that and the closest places are high, that would do that for you. It's a day long, expensive way away for everyone to have that. Um, that's. So this page is going to tell you um the breakdown of the revenues and expenses and what we've done in the past. As you can see, we're about 10,000 and over what we normally do. But as I mentioned, we are about $5,000 more in two areas with the others there. Any questions? Um, next. So here is the special A, special needs event. Where there are five users, they, they do this on their own. They do not charge us for this. They not expect to be paid for it. They open their rides up to two hours with their staff to provide a service for this community. They only do this one other place, obviously. So we're, the participants, I think, are all here that they will do this. And when in a class, when I mean Thomas, he's the uh provides pizzas. This year, S and M Communications, they made actually chicken nuggets, uh burgers, fries for kids. So we had a better, we had a different experience for the kids than we normally do. And they also be the par for ride people. So they get fed as part of a thank you for opening the ride up. Um, and I just want to thank uh Wayne Parish Valley Users, Estinate Communications, the schools, the fair board, and you know, my staff for helping us with that. Because it's a two hour vet. I'll be honest with you. I woke up Friday morning and I was like, I forgot we had a special needs set. So at 9:30, we are moving to get it, move on it, move it ahead. So it's a great event.
It was nice. You have a lot of free things for the kids too, the bouncy house and they, the corn place to play, the corn pit.
That is something that the fair board does provide.
That's nice.
The community where they don't, they can pay the $3 to get in if they don't have the $20 to go to the market. They have two bound, usually two bound up, they had a horn pit.
Got a maze thing too.
Um, the match nationals built a maze back at our museum. Um, we have the barrel train that runs for free on Saturdays. I think three chop. Um, Rosen drove that horse with, so they.
So we do try to provide some free things as long as the paid things for our people that are, for patrons that come. And if we didn't charge, we couldn't put on some of these things. Because we have to get, they, the fair board has to get their money back. That's why we usually.
I tell you, I had a good time on the merry-go-round. I hadn't been on the like a little kid. I didn't get on the horse, but.
Well, I would say.
It was fun. Yeah.
Our biggest track this year, first time I've ever had that, the monster truck, you put 12 people in the back of it.
But there's receipts, they didn't have their seats.
Yeah.
And I think I had a picture.
And you take a ride, it's about a five minute ride. I was on the last ride, it's awesome. They will be back next year. Um, we will bring big cars that we can ride over them. They have like a little track, so they will be back. And we had 430 guests in three hours driving that thing. And we had a kid that came all the way from Richmond and he almost didn't get to get on it because we shut. And we had a kid that came all the way from Richmond and he almost didn't get to get on it because we shut it down, um, I was going to give him my tea. But people come from all around to do this attraction, it's a big attraction and we charge ten dollars, most places charge twenty to thirty dollars. And they still made their money back, you know, to do that in three hours. Home arts, so home arts was a big success this year, um, without the sorrels, it wouldn't have been done because there is basically without Nina Monroe. The only other person that helped them without that, they would have been done. As you can see, they aren't sure if they're willing to come back next year because they have to take two days off from work and get their help. And they have to run all this stuff and it is hard for so many community to be able to do that and lose money when they're not really getting anything back.
See the sheriff is a judge.
I, I can think of one other person that might be able to get to volunteer to eat for free. Well, we.
Not me. Not me, but you might have a similar name.
We are, we are, that is going to be, we are going to be looking for volunteers just there next year. Next slide. Any more questions about home arts? Uh, we're, if, if everything goes right, we're going to have to expand to the third ship for home arts, because we filled up those two. And they are donated ships, uh, from the company. Um, this is our fair board. This year, as you can see, there are about eight people that are not counting working. That is a lot for a fair board to try to put on about itself. And with my staff, um, it's almost impossible now, because the boat we're attracted, we're drawn every year. And it's a good thing, but there's going to, the fair board is at a point where they almost don't have, they won't be able to come back and help next year because of the pressure it puts on them with the drop. We need to find a way to help the fair board out with this event if possible to keep it here. Mr. Dahl, he got a hold of two, three finance people on Saturday night at midnight. I mean, Friday night at midnight, they come out Saturday to help us take money, or we wouldn't have been able to take money, but from four to eight, um. I called on Melinda Payne, she works for me, two of her daughters came out, while they were there trying to take money. So my neighbor doesn't make money for them for power. We were strapped, I was in a parking lot, like I said, I was on fifty-three parking cars halfway down fifty-three. So. We need a lot of help.
Have you reached out to?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, finish please.
Oh, I'm not sure what happened, I think, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, um, have you tried reaching out to, uh, other nonprofit organizations in the areas, Knights of Columbus, Rotary.
I haven't been going to see you. Right, that's right, they weren't back.
A lot of times they'll, they'll, they'll provide volunteers if they know they're going to get some sort of.
So the Fluvan Leadership Development helped us a little bit this year. We, th- these are all paid, we paid them to do these, they helped with the beer garden, they helped for one day, we had a root, a root, tell me if I'm wrong. We had the. The fans, the band boosters, they helped pour beer, we had a rootin at the welcome gate. And American nation at the welcome gate, so we are reaching out to some of those groups. But not everybody is wanting to do it. And if we even try to pay people this year, people didn't know where, we tried to pay a hundred, people paid a hundred dollars for three hours, four hours to go park car. We can't get anybody to do it. So the county is going to help, and my thought is, all the money that our, our rates goes back to the general fund. So I want to see if other county departments can help it, and not just parks and rec department. Because it is a county event, not a parks and rec event or a county fair event, it's for the community. Um, the next slide has pictures, you're ready, now you're good. Um, that's just a picture from the fair, sorry, I didn't have the A four H information, but I wasn't able to get that from this mail. So we can try, I think they had about thirty animals, if I'm not mistaken, ranges from team to cow and chicken and rabbit. They had more participation this year than we did last year, so we are always growing, um. And they had the Virginia Ag Mobile, like remember last year we had the. Art Mobile, I think, where you could go and look at artworks, there's artwork, this year they had, uh, the Ag Mobile where you could go and look at different agricultural kind of stuff. And take a slot out, slot out, the, the bill, you're done. There's some band, some of the bands we had on there and then the Pepper Alley. It's kind of what I said, it's the beer truck, that's where, that's what our beer truck looks like and our beer garden. And you can see there's a lot and it's always, always a lot, and we did a, a lot of people, I think they did seven hundred and some people in two days. Was it really good, we did like five hundred people on Saturday, over five hundred people Saturday, that's a lot of people.
Yeah.
Um, any questions?
Great.
Only thing I'd say is, i- in, uh, Aaron, I've, we'll both remember this during the whole fair experience and, and I meant to actually catch up with you before. Uh, the board meeting a little bit, but there were two items that came up, um, from one organization. Um, that. They were questioning whether things were policy or not and, and one of them, I think, Aaron, the first one was. Oh, when the, when the, when the cutoff was to get signed up, right? And, uh, to, in order to put a ten up. And the other one was, I think, the day, the first morning, no, Fri- Friday morning. Is whether items could be handed out.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I know that because I was getting on a boat in Delta Ville, uh. No, no, yeah, and, 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 in a, one of the things I got out of that is, if, if. If we're going to have citizens that are saying, a- a- and, and more on the handing out of stuff. If we're going to have citizens saying, um, or if we're going to say to citizens, you can't do these things and we'll have to remove you if you, if you do, they need to be policy. Uh, we need to be sure where they're clear and written policy.
We have never let anybody come during our special needs time to even set up their own booth.
Right.
It is outside of fair time. It's not during fair hours, that it's only for the special needs community.
Okay.
I mean, it's not the time to go in there to ask for stuff from them, it's their time to enjoy themselves.
So I was thinking, you were saying during the entire fair, people aren't allowed to hand people, hand stuff out.
You cannot walk around and hand stuff out.
Is that policy?
Yeah.
And where, if, if so.
No, yeah, I mean, from a, from a, no, I mean, from the fair board, I mean, no, the county doesn't have a, the county doesn't have a policy that says you can't hand stuff out. But I mean, there's a reason that, that the county is requesting that any vendors have to sign up in advance.
Sure.
Because there's, that, that's your time, if you want to go out there and solicit business or whatever you want to do, then, then get a booth.
And you pretend about that spot, and that way, we don't have everybody coming out there trying to solicit, everybody walking up and down.
Uh, I hear you, uh, uh, and when I talked to you that Friday, you were unsure if that was written anywhere that said they ca- that, that can be. But, but.
It will be written.
Right, that, my, my point is, if we're going to say to citizens, stop, and, you know, I, I had him on one phone and a citizen calling me on the other phone, as he knows, because they're standing right beside each other. And, uh, for me to, as somebody. And, and look, I know, I don't run the fair and all that, but I, you called me first and then he called me. It, for a citizen to say, he's not letting me do, then we got to have a policy that says. Po- some sort of policies that are written that say what can and what can't.
We don't have to let anybody go to our special needs day though.
I understand.
And that, so that, that is unique.
But, but I asked you if it was for the whole fair and you said, that, that I think you, didn't you say that they?
Solicit for the whole fair, you have to have a booth, but we never let any vendors set up for a special needs day because that is for them and not for information to be given out to them or anything.
Right.
Because that is, that is, some of them, we had one girl, she ran into one of the gates where you shoot. They let her go in the game, they let her do some stuff behind, and it takes a lot of people to go help somebody like that. We don't have the time to help vendors there for that, and that is one of the reasons why I asked them to leave that day. We don't allow any vendors in there for a special needs day, it is during our fair hour. So, and I let them stay on the state main chain road. So, so they. Can't not let them do that.
So I, again, the conversation you and I had that day wasn't specific about that, the, the type of people coming in that day. As you said, general rule, you haven't allowed that throughout the fair. And if, if that's going to be there, the, I'm just saying, there, there's got to be some sort of written policies that, that, to, in order to support you. That, a- and they don't, somebo- somebody coming in, let's say they tried to do it on Saturday, they don't know whether you've let other people or not, they're a citizen within.
If they're walking down handed out brochure.
Right.
Then I'm going to tell them that they need to go, because they don't have a vendor spot, and then they can't do that.
I understand.
Respect you.
There needs to be a policy saying, are we disagreeing that there needs to be a policy?
No, it's hard, because we say you have to, that's why we do the ten by ten space, so you can't go and hand out the.
So.
I don't understand.
Okay. Okay. But, but, I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just going to tell you, the first time I ran for office, I rented a space, because I can tell you this policy has been around for a long time. My space was back behind the existing stage somewhere. And so not many people were making the buy to see me, so I started walking around with stuff on and I was like, you need to go back to your box.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against the.
I'll just say, if, if, that I don't know if it's written, well, Kelly found it.
Yeah, I'm not against the policy, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying, all I was saying was, I want to be sure if, if I've got to defend it to the citizens that. I can say that, that things like that are in policy, and, and, and at the time that you and I had la- last had a conversation about it, you weren't sure if it was in written policy.
And I like to tell you is.
And I guarantee.
Ten years ago, they asked me.
Been online dates on their registration form.
Yeah.
This year, and it's usually, I don't think it got left off.
Yeah.
So we had to have our stuff in to the health department, fourteen days, I think, prior to event. All food and all that, it's so that it can be looked at and to be certified, the other permits. So if I can't let a food person in after fourteen days, I should not be able to let any other person in after fourteen days, because it's not fair. And I try to do it for one, I do for all, I think I told you that when I was up there.
And I'm not questioning any one of your policies.
So I try to do, what I do for one, I try to do for all, so if I can't let a food person in, then I, I should not be able to let a non-food person in because they can't get in because of that policy.
What about carrying a weapon? We have the policy on weapons, there were some people that had weapons.
So there was one, I saw open carry, one.
Saw one guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw one girl, he's a guy.
I saw the girl.
Concealed carry, because I know who they are and I know what they did, I will tell you something, I went, beginning of this month, I got my concealed carry for a minute. Because. If a citizen could be out there with a gun, how am I supposed to protect myself, my staff, or a patron in the park that I'm responsible for if I don't have protection? But it's in our county policy that I'm not allowed to carry a gun while I'm an employee for the county. In my car, all my person, or in a park.
So Fred, what's, what's, so somebody brought this up to me after, and of course, people will quote law without being able to quote it. And I had people saying, it's a right on government property to be able to carry a firearm.
That's, that was addressed last year's general assembly. And I, I can't remember the, the exact terms of it, but it broadened the authority of, of localities to, to restrict carrying firearms on, on county property.
Okay.
That needs to be clarified.
There are very few places in the state of Virginia that don't allow, I don't know, Virginia's like, I will, I think, I want county does not allow in their parks or Charlottesville. There is some, I'll look it up after, there are some places that don't allow open, or open or concealed carry.
Well, that has, that has changed, and it's changed for the more restrictive.
So, so just to be clear, they, we can say, we, that can't be at the fair.
I think so, I, I haven't looked that up recently, so.
Yeah.
That's nice to be clarified for next year.
But put it down, that was not allowed. It was the fair board that posted that, and we changed it within. Short minutes, probably over a call, um, but.
But the board would have to approve that.
Yeah.
That it can or approve that it can't?
It can't.
That it can't, because they.
Cannot, I'm sorry.
Cannot.
Okay.
Board, the board must approve a policy that says you cannot carry firearms on any county property or any, any, any specified county property.
And until.
Mister, uh.
I'm sorry.
Mister Spitzer wouldn't have, wouldn't have the authority to adopt that.
Yeah, I mean, there's a policy, there's a policy already that employees cannot, but there's not a policy that, that gentle citizens.
So, at, this is a question, so in the case of this at the fair, those people carrying firearms. For county staff to have said, you can't come in here with that firearm, would have been unlawful.
Staff wouldn't do that.
Done that.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm asking the question, is that, that is unlawful to have done so without there being a policy from the board?
Well, it's not authorized for it, it's not, it can't be a county regulation unless it's approved by the board.
Right. Okay.
So we suggest, it says they don't need it, we had, I don't.
But, excuse me, until, I think it was last year, the board didn't have the authority to adopt that. That's why I'm saying the statute was amended recently.
And this board has not, correct?
I hope not.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I've been known to carry myself.
Personally, I think if citizens are going to be able to carry, and this might not be, but I think as an employee, I should be able to carry on our property. Because what is their safety better than that? Personally, but that's a different fight, different argument to go over because it's going to be, have to be a policy, okay, in our. In our handful, but I think that's something that is to be looked at, because if I can't protect myself and somebody else can carry a gun on the property. What are we doing, you know what I'm saying, and you don't want to see me carrying a gun on my side.
You don't want to get into that debate tonight, yes, there's two sides to all this question.
Like that was part of the.
Yeah, these.
That was a question.
Part of the phone call.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, I know whatever was, they, what special needs, we changed the, the statement that was made to say it is allowed, we just kind of add. Like I said, I had a, I had a vendor, they wanted to carry, I said, well, you probably don't need to be here if you think you need to carry. You know what I'm saying, that's not what we want to show our people, that a vendor's in there carrying, while you're kind of talking to them. And that makes people.
All right.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Thank you so much, sir, appreciate it. Yes, sir, you will. Now we'll move forward to consent agenda. I, minutes of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, planning retreat. J, minutes of September seventh, twenty twenty-two, Miss Lee's, K, C R M F, F M S, B A C, O R P. Vandalism and death reimbursement, Mr. Striplin. L, F Y twenty-two, Sheriff's Office Budget Transfer, Miss Milton. M, F Y twenty-three, Fluvan County Public Schools, Grant Supplemental Appropriation to Skill. In proclaiming October as Community Planning Month, Mr. Miles. Do you anything y'all would like to pull, maybe? Consent agenda.
Miss, Mr. Sheriff, if I can just add one thing, Mrs. um, Mrs. Eager, uh, called the office earlier and there are some date corrections that we need to make on the September seventh. Uh, minutes, so we've made those, so.
So they have been edited.
They have been edited.
I was going to mention that it seems to me that maybe the process that was referred to as never having amended the minutes. Something that isn't very clear in the minutes itself, because I know for a fact that we have any time.
Just a way we're calling it any time.
Um, and so therefore, when Mr. Corwin was referring to the fact that ten years, the minutes have never been amended, it seemed that that statement was not accurate. Those, the minutes have been amended multiple times, just as they were to this point, we just did it retroactively. Uh, so I, I think maybe we need to note in the minutes that we are amending the minutes. I don't know, something like that.
But, but was, was he talking about amending the public comment section? Obviously talking about the whole.
Cause there was, there was the word, without getting too deep, there was, I don't know, there was a, a piece of verbiage in the minutes. If they were approved, and then we came back at a subsequent meeting and amended the minutes to change. To change one word in, in, in the minutes to more appropriately reflect what the reason why Mr. O'Brien was not at the meeting. Um, and, and so we amended the minutes at that point.
Which, and, and, and since that's been brought up once again, the public record can be pulled up in the FOIA request, I contacted both the staff and the attorney. And that's, and that's whether I could be used for purposes going to a funeral. So it was, while it was, uh, maybe not mentioned in the original set of minutes, there was certainly mentioned in the fence.
By the way, just in case anybody's interested, I've looked up the, uh, the, uh, the actual resolution. By the way, just in case anybody's interested, I've looked up the, uh, the, uh, the actual resolution. And the resolution, it was resolution number twelve dash two oh two oh. It was adopted. Um, the eighteenth day of, of March, two thousand twenty, and it's on, it's on the website.
It's, it's under the, it's under the border supervisors page. At the bottom, there's, there's something that says supporting documents and we added it down there.
We please be sure that this.
Yeah, can we make sure we board that?
True.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the changes edited by Miss Egan?
I, I moved that we adopt the consent agenda with the changes made.
Second, motion made by Mr. Booker, seconded by Mr. O'Brien, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Chair votes aye, motion pass five zero. All right, let me turn the paper over. Unfinished business, is there any? I don't believe so. Any new business? Uh, don't believe so. I will now open the second round of public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board, please state your name, address. Keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. Is anyone which to speak to the board at this time? I've seen no one inside approaching. Is there anyone on with wishing to speak? I see no hands raised. I will now close the second round of public comment. Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chair, I was the Florida County Board of Supervisors for Aaron to close me. Uh, for certain division, section three dot two dash thirty seven eleven eight three, section you got, you guys thirty seven eleven eight five. Section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven eight seven, Virginia, as many persons discussing real estate. Fourteen in real estate acquisition. Perspective industry, perspective business. Litigation, active litigation, connection with designs, press, water and sewer project.
I second that.
We have a motion made by Mr. Brown, seconded by Mr. Booker, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Chair votes aye, we are now in close.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to close me and adjourn in the Flannan County Board of Supervisors Committee again in open session. Be resolved if the board supervisor does hear about this or if I did the rest of each member's knowledge. One only public is the Fanners Law Office, exempt from multiple media. Be resolved, the board supervisor does hear about so we find that the rest of each members knowledge, one only public is the partners lawfully exempted from up and media requirements of a second. And to all the said probably business matters of whatever I am motion by which the close meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered to be.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, second by Mr. Booker, and anybody else see Mr. O'Brien turn the same color as his shirt. Um, Mr. Fairchild.
Yes.
Vote. You got to vote by one. You're now first. You're on that end.
But what?
To have closed meetings, come out of closed obsession. Just to say aye.
Aye. I didn't hear it as a motion, so I didn't.
So Brian, chair votes aye. We're now out of closed session. Do we have a motion?
I'm moving with Sharon.
Sayonara, second that one. All right, this Booker is making motion, Mr. O'Brien is second to the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, chair votes aye, motion passed by zero.